Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, July 22, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter Caleb Wysocki. Due to the length of the agenda for today's meeting, there will be no reading of the legislation. We are asking that you please go to this city website at www.pittsburghpa.gov. Click on City Council Legislative Information Center Agenda. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's pre-agenda meeting for Wednesday, July 22. We have several interviews. Madam Clerk, do you have the list for the interviews I had?
I'll read them. You want to take them all together or because there are several different?
Let's take the Commission on Human Relations first.
Okay. All right, so Bill Number 464, Resolution Appointing, Mrs. Leah Lizarondo, to serve as a Commissioner for the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire June 30, 2024. Bill Number 465, Resolution Appointing, Ms. Brittany Beasley, to serve as a Commissioner for the City of Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire June 30, 2024. Bill Number 466, Resolution Appointing, Mr. Alberto Dinsiquin, to serve as a Commission for the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire June 30, 2024.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to first say we're joined by Councilmembers Bruce Kraus, I have to go through the list, Councilman Wilson, Councilman Lavelle. That's all I have.
Yeah.
Morning, Madam President.
Yeah, that's it. Good morning. Thank you for being here. Okay, and then I'm going to start with the first name. Who did you have for that?
I have Leah Lizarondo, and I hope I said it right.
Thank you. We're going to go and each of you say a little bit about yourselves. You can keep it brief and then councilmembers will ask any questions that they might have. I want to thank you all for being here. This is a really difficult way to do an interview. I apologize for this setup, but I thank you for being here.
Before we begin, I didn't hear my name in the list of interviewees today. Brigitte.
We're taking we're taking Human Relations first and I think you're on the Ethics Hearing Board.
Yes. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to.
Haven't begun you. Haven't begun you. And that's Brigitte?
Brigitte.
G.
Go ahead, Leah. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah. Good morning, councilmembers. I am honored to be here. I'm Leah Lizarondo. I am, I currently serve as the CEO and was a co-founder of 412 Food Rescue. And we work in food insecurity and have been honored to serve the city in this crisis. I immigrated to the US 20 years ago and moved to Pittsburgh over 10 years ago. And, you know, the opportunity to serve on this commission, especially at this time, is something that I am looking forward to and looking forward to helping steward the city towards change and equity.
Thank you so much. And we're very familiar with your work and especially during this time. It's very needed, so thank you. And then next we have Brittany. Good morning.
Good morning, Council. My name is Brittany Beasley. I am a graduate of Howard University, 2012. I currently own a small production company where I do marketing, photography, videography, affordable services for those that need them. I am excited about the opportunity to serve on the Human Relations Commission. About six years ago, I actually had a situation where I needed to come to Human Relations and be walked through with a staff member on a situation I had. And it's very important that those who need to go through the process feel supported. So thank you very much for having me. And yeah, looking forward to any questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. And now we have Alberto. Is Alberto here? Alberto.
Hi, good morning. Yes, I will commute my mic. Thank you for having me here. I'm honored to be part of this commission. Yes, this is a good time to be here in always, but especially lately. It's something that I feel deep in my heart. Since I moved to the States in 1998, I never knew I'm going to learn more about yourself, me, and be more things that I never thought I'm going to be. And for some reason, I ended up here in Pittsburgh 10 years ago, looking for using my, all my backgrounds, my languages. But I realized that I can add that flavor into diversity, inclusion. I was Executive Director for the Pittsburgh Hispanic Development Corporation since the beginning. With all the Pittsburgh initiative, I was one of the very first neighbors in Imagine Pittsburgh. Also luckily doing all of this, approaching and trying to increase the diversity in the city, I add the Latino flavor into the Kennywood Latino nationality days. And but today I'm serving also to the Commonwealth with the Auditor General, Eugene De Pasquale. I am a state auditor and am proud to be a part of the city in this commission.
And a resident of district too. I'm going to add that. With the Lebanese wife, so I really like you. Okay, so and then we have.
Those are the three for Human Relations.
Commission on Human Relations. Members, do you have any questions?
I would just make a brief comment if I can, Council President.
Please, please.
So I am always, always delighted at the caliber and the diversity of candidates that come before this council to serve on our different boards, authorities, and commissions. Excuse me. And the city's commitment to diversity and having boards, authorities, and commissions look like who we really are as a city and the people that we are is incredibly important to this administration as well as to this council. So it is with absolute delight that I will vote in the affirmative for your confirmation. The reason that we like to ask you to come in is that we want the public to see you. We want the public to meet you and to know who is filling these positions on our boards, authorities, and commissions and to make that personal connection with you. And we get to do that here too. Otherwise, you're a piece of paper that sort of came to council. And I love the idea of seeing you and who you are and hearing about your background, what you bring, and and we can sense your passion and commitment to the city of Pittsburgh. And it's a delightful experience for me. I hope it has been for you. And we look forward to the work ahead for you. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Councilman. That was very nice. Any other members?
Madam President, if I may.
Oh, we're joined by Councilman Cockill. Yes.
I'm surprised. I don't usually make the early pre.
Me either, when I'm cheering you.
I got up especially early for you folks though this morning. I did tune in late and I'm sorry I missed Sharon. I missed Brigitte. I missed a few, but I just wanted to say a couple of things.
We haven't taken them yet.
Oh, okay, okay. Do you want me to withhold my comments then?
No, we're taking them in order of the committee that they're.
I understand. Okay, okay, good. Leah, where did you immigrate from, Leah?
I'm Filipino, so.
Oh, great, great. Well, welcome. And you said you're 412 Rescue.
Yes.
Yeah, I really love the work you do. So, you know, you know, and anything in the South Hills of Pittsburgh here, I want to join in and help, you know, we're obviously still going to have tough times, I believe.
We do a lot in the South Hills and a few councilmembers have done rescues.
Yep. Well, I'm looking forward to it. I want to do that with you, okay?
Thank you.
And Brittany, I know you said Howard University, very impressive.
Yeah.
And let me just tell you, do you do political campaigns? It sounds like you, you know, can do anything with your skills there.
So I have worked on a political campaign. Yeah, so.
I may be in touch.
Okay, yeah.
Ethics Commission next.
How did I know you were going to go there, Teresa?
Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah. Alberto, I wanted to ask you where you were from, Alberto.
Hola Anthony. I'm originally from Venezuela, Caracas, Venezuela.
Love Venezuela. And you're adept at many languages, you say?
I do some, a little Italian.
I knew I sensed an Italian accent, something in there. I really did. So and most importantly, Alberto, PHDC is headquartered in Beachview. You said you, you work for PHDC.
Very beginning with Victor Diaz.
Yep.
Like from 2012, I got the news that I'm going to be in 2013, the Executive Director, and right after, we couldn't find the position while the incubator was like growing. And then we are where we are right now. I couldn't even be there in person, but in a spirit.
No, no, you know what? Under Guillermo's direction and, you know, everything is really nice there. They actually leased up city building. They're doing really good things. So so I was glad to hear you were part of that. And and that's it for me. Councilman Wilson, you heard about the good things that PHDC is doing in Beachview, right? Okay, thanks, folks.
Thanks for lighting it up the morning. Anyone else?
This is my.
Any other members?
I'm tuning into one of these.
Any other members? Okay, and I'm just going to say thank you for all of you, for all the work that you're going to do and are doing. I'm familiar with with a lot of it and I know that it's so important to the city. I kind of tell you, Leah, I did a food drive for our district. I want, it is the hardest work, so I cannot imagine people doing this day in a day. And I just want to thank you because and thank your volunteers because I don't know that people realize how difficult it really is and how heartbreaking it is when you can't get something to somebody, you know, in a timely fashion. So I just want to thank you very much for your very important work for the city. And I can tell you, after that, that that drive, I thought I'm going to make sure whatever we do from now on, we donate to somebody who already, who's already doing it. But it hurt my feelings so bad when I saw the food bank who also does great work, but when I saw people turned away from the civic arena donation, it it's what made me do the food drive. So but one of the things, it's also what made me do some of the legislation that we did to create more urban farms across the city so that people never have to ever be turned away for food and that there's always a place for the public to go for something. It just drove me like with such passion. But is there, do you have community gardens or anything like that where you want? I'm just curious.
We work with community gardens to harvest and distribute food. So we work even with households who have, you know, right now we have enough zucchini to feed half of the world, I think. But yes, and you know, I'm happy to share with you that we do, when we do food distributions, we do accept drive-ups and walk-ups.
Okay, thank you. And I'm glad to see the diversity in this group because I do know Alberto does a lot with the Hispanic group, but I do know his wife is truly as Lebanese as am I. And I do have a nephew, two nephews who are Filipinos. So I like seeing the diversity, not just in terms of race and ethnicity, but of age and gender and just even geographically. That's what I really care a lot about too, because Alberto is also from our district and familiar with the Southwest, which is, you know, not always the case with some of the boards and authorities. So I really want to thank all of you for your work and excited to work along with you to do some of the great work in Pittsburgh. One of the things I do ask is, and I think it's really important, is as we give some grants through the URA, is that the Commission on Human Relations works with the URA and making sure that people that are coming in from, my family immigrated from Lebanon to Pittsburgh, my grandparents, all my grandparents years ago, well, two to Ohio, two to Pittsburgh. And when they opened a business, they just opened it the way they knew and they did the best they knew based on what they knew. And so I think that we're seeing a lot of problems in the community with businesses that are ran by people. There seems to be a clash between the community that has been there for a while, oftentimes African-American communities, and the immigrant community. And I'd like to see some trainings and some things going on hand in hand so people know when you come into a community, how to work with the community. We have a really great business in Sheridan that is owned by an immigrant who does an amazing job involving the community. But part of that is his own knowledge. And I don't see that a lot in some places. Some of the places we have the most difficult times is and people just didn't know that some of the things they say, you can't, it's just not appropriate. It may have been appropriate somewhere else. It may, it may be what you've been accustomed to, but it's not okay when you're running a business in the city of Pittsburgh. And if we're giving grant money to that, we really need to make sure that we're building those relationships. So I hope that the commission will come up with something to work with the URA in that regard. So I just want to put that out there. I put it out there last year. I'll put it out again this year. They actually started to do it and then there were some changes there, so that stopped. So so that's it for me. Anybody else? Any other members? With that said, we'll have these on the, for Final Action next week. And you'll be, I'm sure you're all going to be approved. So thank you very much. I'm looking forward to working with you. And now, thank you. And now we'll take the Ethics Commission to give Councilman Cockill a reminder. Just kidding.
We have Bill. We have Bill Number 470, Resolution Appointing, Mrs. Brigitte Poole, to serve as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire June 30, 2023.
Thank you. Good morning. Do you want to turn your mic on?
Good morning.
Thank you. Okay, and do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name is Brigitte Poole. I am a Pittsburgh native. I'm born and raised here. I spent a lot of my formative years growing up in our inner-city neighborhood of Homewood. So Homewood always has a dear place to me. I am an attorney in the labor and employment practice here in Pittsburgh. And I'm really looking forward to using some of my skill sets to serve the city in different ways that I have, different than I have done in the past, really starting to utilize more of my formal training to make sure I'm making a difference and serving Pittsburgh in a way that I didn't really think would be fitting for me before, but I'm willing to explore different forms of service. And I think this is a great opportunity to do that.
Thank you very much. And I think we're lucky to have you too. Councilmembers?
Only to say that the comments that I made previously apply to Brigitte as well. And I'm just, I'm thrilled beyond belief to have you here and happy to vote in the affirmative for your appointment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Madam President, I just want to say welcome, Brigitte. You all are making the decision very easy. Happy to have you.
Thank you. I'm honored to be considered amongst a great, this great group of people.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members? And Brigitte, you might want to.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Wilson.
I just wanted to say welcome and thanks for your introductions. I really enjoyed hearing all of them today. That's it.
And I'm just going to say you might want to make a separate appointment to me with Councilman Cockill. I have, I have no questions. I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve. I, you know, I, I can't wait. I just sent an email to the mayor, like, I can't wait to get off of some boards and authorities and or committees, trying to minimize things instead of increasing. So I realized the commitment it does take and I just want to thank you, especially if people, I don't know if people realize these are volunteer positions. So thank you very much for caring about the city of Pittsburgh and wanting to make a difference in the in the committee that you're serving. So thank you. And you'll be affirmed again like next week as well. And with that said, we have Gender Equity Commission.
Last commission is Bill 458, Resolution Appointing, Dr. Sharon Higginbotham, to serve as a member of the Gender Equity Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2023.
Good morning. Do you want to tell us, do you have anything you want to say?
That's a wrong question to ask me.
Ask me when you got your glasses, because I love them.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Just to, just to tell you just a little bit about myself. I currently work at Bethlehem Haven as the Chief Operating Officer, where if you don't know anything about Bethlehem Haven, it started out about almost 40 years ago as a women's shelter. But now we offer housing, we offer medical respite, and all this is really around women being healthy and whole. And we do a lot of work with Leah. Leah, as you were talking, I just kept saying, God, thank you for the work that you do because it has really helped, you know, the women that we serve to be healthy. It's very difficult to be healthy and whole when you don't have food to eat and very, very difficult to even get out and look for housing when you are weak, you know, because you don't have the right food to eat as well. So thank you so much for your work. I am also a, I'm an ethicist by training and in particular, I'm a global bioethicist, which really means I've worked quite a bit with gender and equity, not only gender equity, but inclusion. And I have taught at Duquesne in their theology department and taught women and Christianity, which was a very, was a fascinating, fascinating class. And just this week, I've been, I was appointed to Chatham University Women's Studies Program as a visiting scholar. So I'm all about, all about equity. I'm all about inclusion. And, you know, my, my heart knows that if we do inclusion, we don't have to do diversity. You know, we don't have to do all those other little subsets of things. If we just start from the very beginning with looking at our neighbor and saying, you are included, you're welcome, then we could just, we could just do many, many, many things. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve. I'm just, I'm so excited. I'm just so very, very excited. And I've also written quite a bit about diversity and gender and all that kind of stuff. So this is my wheelhouse and I just, my prayer is that I'm able to really make an impact. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm at a time in my life where if it, if it does not make an impact, I won't do it.
I appreciate that a lot about you. Really so impressive. Councilmembers?
Yeah, Madam President, may I?
Yes, please.
Hi, Sharon. Nice to meet you.
Hi, Bruce.
So I have to get this out of the way first. I truly applaud Mayor Pudido for probably being the most enlightened mayor in terms of inclusion that we've probably ever had. I'll repeat it again. I love sitting here and seeing all your faces. We, we honor and cherish a city that looks like who we really are, right? So my question for you is one about the importance of inclusion of transgendered people in particular. And especially, I don't want to say especially, but I can't think of a better word. But in light of an escalating violence against transgendered women, especially transgendered women of color, I'd just sort of like to have your thoughts about what we can do better. I loved your approach of if we do inclusion, we don't need diversity. One of the most frustrating things for me is to be reactive to a situation as opposed to being an effective planner and manager on the front end. If we do our work as effective planners and managers, then we're, we're not looking to clean up what we didn't do on the back end, right?
That's right, yeah.
So it's, it's just so important today to talk about, you know, I was just reading, we're doing a proclamation for the first transgendered woman elected to city council in a small city like Wheeling, West Virginia.
Oh, my.
Yes. And when I talked to Rosemary, when I called her to congratulate her, I just assumed that they were elected at large, that you would need a much larger pocket of voters to achieve a council seat as a transgendered woman in a city like Wheeling. But she corrected me and said, no, we're by district. And so, yeah, and there are seven member councils. So in a pocket of one-seventh of registered voters in the city of Wheeling, she obtained a city council seat. So anyway, I'll pull back a little bit and ask if you could just please sort of give me your thoughts on the inclusion of especially transgendered people at this time.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. And the answer is simple. When I say inclusion, I mean inclusion of everybody. You know, it goes beyond race. It goes beyond ethnicity. It go, it takes us to look at other, other who is different than we are. And a lot of times when I work with, when I work with folks, I do some consulting also. And I will, I always have a chair and an empty chair. And I ask the question, who's not represented? Who's not here? And what is startling to me right now is that it's just what you're talking about. We have all of, we know who's not here, but when it comes to sexual identity, we forget about that. And that's not inclusion. It's, it's just not. And so we work a lot with transgender women here in the, in the shelter. And what I would really like to see is that there is a commission like the one that I've been asked to sit on because we have to ask the folks who are being affected what the needs are. We, they have the answer. They have the wisdom. I don't, I don't have it. They do. What I can do is walk alongside of them and, and open up any doors that I might open to make sure that the playing field is leveled.
Yeah, I think the, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. Go ahead.
I think the worst thing that we can do is to go to people and to tell them what we think they need. How offensive that is as opposed to, yeah, inviting, here, there's a seat for you here. You know, please join us. Tell us how we can help. Isn't that really the approach?
That's the approach. That is the approach. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
We have to have that voice. You're so welcome.
Thank you. I'm good, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Madam President?
No.
Yes.
Thank you. I waited until the end. Yeah, it's Councilman Strasburg. I want, I wanted to wait till the end just to thank all of you for your willingness to serve. All three of these commissions are incredibly important. They have, I think, taught me a lot over the years. I've worked closely with all three and the members through webinars, through working closely. I apologize. My computer's overheating right now, so it might be making some noises. But all three commissions have been, have been resources, I think, for councilmembers in addition to the general public. So thank you for your willingness to serve. I look forward to working with you. Sharon, it's really nice to meet you over video. I've served, I served a couple of years, a few years ago with Pump to Run, and I got, had the great privilege of meeting some of the residents at Bethlehem Haven, going for walks and runs with them in the morning and really getting to know some of them pretty well. So great to meet you in person. It's a really, it's a really wonderful, really wonderful place, a really special place and some special people who have been, who have been, who have stayed there.
Thank you. Yeah, nice to meet you too, Erica. That was, it was, that was a wonderful initiative. I, I used to feel, I would feel kind of guilty. I'd drive past going to work and I'd see the women out walking with the Pump to Run folks are running. And they would often say, when do you? And they would often say, when are you coming out? And I'd say, well, we're not going to answer that.
Well, hopefully when all this is over and we're able to get back out together again.
Yes, yes.
Get back out, we can all get back out. But anyway, thank you all again, just for your willingness to serve. It means a lot to, to all of us.
Thank you. Any other members?
Madam President, I just wanted to say to Sharon, I love what you said about you only do things that are meaningful in your life right now. And I think you come in and really get the right attitude. So, and to me, attitude's about everything. That's why I'm in this, at this job, because I feel it's me. So, welcome aboard. I think you're working with Councilwoman Gross, I believe, is on the, on the committee as well. I would encourage you to work closely with her, and I've talked with her many times about GEC. And I think she could help you maybe get funds in some way or another, whether it's into our budget or whatever it might be. So, obviously, things, the good work that you do will need funding, right?
Right, right. Did you say councilwoman who?
I think Deborah Gross is on the.
Okay, all right.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, any other members? None. Okay, with that said, well, these will be up, these appointments will be up for a final vote next week. We all appreciate very much all of your willingness to serve and, and all that you bring to the table. So, thank you very much, and good luck. If we can ever be of service to you as you're serving or help in some way, please don't hesitate to contact us. We'd love to be able to be helpful. And Alberto, I know you will. So, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Be well, be safe. We'll go into our standing committee meeting, which Councilwoman Lavelle will chair.
Yep, we roll in.
Okay.
Okay, hello?
Hello?
Oh, yeah. Okay, I guess I'm up next.
No, no, we're getting ready to begin our standing committee meeting. All guests, please mute yourselves until being called upon. Okay. Good morning, and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020. Our first meeting announcement is council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays until further notice. All meetings will stream live on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. We will now begin our speakers. You will have three minutes. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. Our spurt, first speaker is Denise Walker.
Good morning to you, the members of City Council. This is Dennis Walker. And I thank you so much for the opportunity to bring my issues to your attention. I have two items for today's agenda. First, I am an active senior citizen and a resident of the Belle Soure neighborhood for the past fifteen years. I have recently become a licensed mobile vendor with the city as my basic working area. I quite often spend long hours at my downtown office, as I call it, that does not currently offer accessible public restroom facilities for myself and others with such needs. My concern involves an apparent need for public accommodations during this COVID-19 shutdown crisis in the downtown area. Question: Is it possible to install PortaJohn facilities at prime locations in the downtown area? Secondly, my question is for Councilwoman Deb Gross. I have submitted requested information to your office several times for suggested guidance for vending in the Strip, Strip District. I have not, to this point, received answers to any of my submissions. Will you be able to, at any time soon, provide answers to my questions? And I thank you so much for the time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Aikuhanu.
Greetings and thank you. My title is Ikuhana Howmikina, calling on behalf of the Airqaa Confederacy of Aboriginal and American People. And the topic of discussion for me today will be the violence that plagues our communities. It needs to be considered a public health crisis. And funds need to be allocated of a large proportion to this public health crisis, just as it is being allocated for COVID-19. Billions of dollars are being funneled towards that public health crisis. But long before COVID-19 existed, we already were in a public health crisis in our marginless communities. In order to change the narrative surrounding violence that plagues our inner-city communities, we must begin to look at the root cause of that violence, which are a long train of abuses and socioeconomic disadvantages and inequality has led directly to the violence that plagues the inner-city communities across this nation. And due to the unemployment status of many citizens, many residents, and many people at large, we are seeing the violence take a spike. As we are tracking the numbers for COVID, we need to be tracking the numbers of the violence that has increased as a result, so we can narrow that curve. Because of the systematic approach to classism, we are now experiencing a large volume of violence in our inner-city neighborhoods when our seniors are not safe just across the street or to wait on a corner for a bus. And it's not old age that they have to worry about. Now, it is the, a bullet, a stray bullet that may hit one of our seniors, because there are risks between people who are only looking to improve their condition economically, the best way that they know how. And there are studies that have supported this notion that this is directly related to classism. So, the funds that were miraculously created for COVID can also address the issues that are plaguing our inner-city communities. And we will see immediately that things will start to decline as far as violence in the inner-city neighborhoods, because it is financial and economically associated with the lack of resources for the, the people in these communities that are seeing an influx of violence. And so, I would employ City Council to address those systemic issues that our, our communities are facing, and that approach is to allocate funds to get the skill set for these people who lack that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Stanhope.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. I, I wanted to say a few words on the E-Walt home in Lawrenceville and the historic nomination. So, I own a home at 4919 Butler Street, which is not as old as the E-Walt home. And it's been a labor of love over the last few years to, to rehab the home, and it's an ongoing process. And I, I just want to make sure that folks are considering that these properties are important to the neighborhood, they're important to the fabric of the neighborhood, they're important to families and the people who grew up in proximity to those homes. And I think that we, you know, need to make sure that we're considering all of that as we move forward and we make plans to develop things into new uses. These families, I, I know from firsthand experience, the first homeowners of 4919 were the Charles Parkin family. Charles Parkin was a steel magnet and, and was, started the company that eventually became Crucible Steel. A subsequent family that lived in 4919 Stampaher family. Successive generations of those families have been in touch with, with me and have personally come by to see the progress on the property and continue to do so. And I just want to make sure that people understand that there are people in the community, there's people around the country that, that are connected to these properties, and we're losing way too many of them at an astonishing rate here in Lawrenceville. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Hager. Is David Hager with us? I don't see that individual. Our next speaker is Catherine Lafferty.
Hello, good morning. My name is Kathy Lafferty, and I'm a lifelong Lawrenceville resident. I live at 234 Main Street in a very large historic home that my husband and I painstakingly restored over the last thirty years. I am also a licensed real estate agent. I'm speaking today in support of historic nomination of the U-Walt House. First, some personal perspective. My family and extended family were all born and raised in Lawrenceville. In fact, we still live here. We have seen many changes and developments in our community, some good and unfortunately some bad. To allow this house, the U-Walt House, to be demolished and not restored and not allow a historic designation would be one of the very bad, wish we never would have done it, development ventures. As a young person exploring the neighborhood, my friends and I would walk past the house, and we were in awe, wondering who lived there. It was a true mansion in Lawrenceville. It was a very special little gem in our blue-collar neighborhood, something you did not see. To lose this house, this historic house, would be tragic. Fortunately, we have the opportunity to save this important piece of history. Enough with my personal perspective, now with a professional perspective. I've been an active real estate agent for the last eight years. I have listed, sold, and shown houses throughout the city, specifically in Lawrenceville. I consider it my specialty because of my familiarity with the area, knowledge of the history of the area, and knowledge of the specific housing stock. I can tell you with 100% certainty that if properly marketed, the U-Walt House would garner much interest and would sell to be restored. I can attest to those facts. The only marketing I have personally seen was a little bitty-for-sale sign with a phone number tacked on the front of the house. Unless you walked in front of the house, you would not see it. Not very good marketing. We have many current Pittsburghers and out-of-state folks flocking to our city who would jump at this opportunity to make it their own. That is what makes Pittsburgh and Lawrenceville very unique. What I am saying is that it is a very viable option to properly market and sell as a historic home waiting for its new owner. In the recent days of erasing history, let's strive to preserve history and architecture. Let's do the right thing for the future, for future generations to enjoy, so that when young people walk past this grand house, they'll be in awe, just as I was. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dixie Timmets. Is Dixie Timmets with us? Then our next speaker is, and I apologize in advance, Anxiety, Anxiety Danielson. Then our next speaker will be Mary Mazzioti. If not, then our next speaker is Beth Reiners.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi. Okay, good. My name is Beth Reiners, and I have been a resident of Lawrenceville. I'm from Lawrenceville. I've been a resident for twenty years. And I specifically moved here for the old homes and the rich character of the neighborhood. While I'm a lifelong resident of Western Pennsylvania, I do have many friends from out-of-state who specifically moved to Pittsburgh and Lawrenceville in particular for the historic housing stock. It's one of the things that make, makes Pittsburgh unique. So, and lately, we've seen an upswing of developers coming into our neighborhood, tearing down our historic buildings and leaving with the money. And these new developments have not improved our quality of life and are taking away the charm of the area. These horrible developments, I mean, the ruining the neighborhood, and many of these houses are made of brick veneer and corrugated steel and are already starting to deteriorate when the houses that they replaced have lasted for over a hundred years and would easily stand for centuries to come if they weren't now polluting the earth in a landfill. So, the U-Walt House at 186 Home Street is one of the last original homes that are still standing. It was a qualifying structure for the historic district. It's irreplaceable. It was loved for many years by many members of the community. And it's a shame that sheer greed is causing people to want to take it from us. So, please save the U-Walt House from demolition and support the historic nomination of the home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm told David Hager has joined. Is David Hager on the line?
Yeah. Hello, this is Dave Hager of PVE. We're the engineer representing Penrose for three single-family houses on 39th Street and Butler. Again, we're just calling to get, to find out why we can't get our sewage planning module approved. We have our building permits through PLI. We have our permits with Domi. The only outstanding permit we do not have is our PWSA tap-in. And without the tap-in, without the sewage facility module being approved, we cannot, you know, receive our, our PWSA tap-in permit. So, we're just wanting to understand why council cannot approve this at this time. We'd just like to have enough, an explanation. Thanks.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Victor Capone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, my name is Victor Capone, and I live in Lawrenceville at 162 Home Street, which is the same block as the E-Walt House, which is 186 Home E-Walt Street. And I'm strongly in support of the historic recognition of the house. It's beyond a doubt that it's historical. It is one of the oldest structures in the community. I know earlier people spoke about their houses being historic and then restoring it, but this one really is old. At, in the 1830s, the E-Walt property went from Butler Street all the way to the Allegheny River. And at that time, there was just one house on it, the U-Walt House. I have a map from 1873, because I had commissioned a house history of my own house by Carol Peterson, who did a lot of work on historic, you know, the history of the area. And I have a map, and there's a big lot that goes from Butler Street to Plummer, 46th Street to Home, and there's only one house on it, and that is the E-Walt House. It has a carriage entrance that you enter it from Butler Street, and it's, it's pretty extraordinary. The house is in nice shape. It is a strong structure. And I have walked by it for years, hoping that it would be restored. I feel a little connection to the house. I mean, as a neighbor, I've shoveled the, the walkway in front of it while Mr. Rupert was still alive. And all this time, I have hoped that it time, I have hoped that it could be restored. It's really, it's really important and yeah, I just, also, there is a commitment from the community. We, we would like to see it purchased. Many of us have, have, you know, we're committed to the owner getting a fair market value for the house and that ending it up in the hands of somebody who wants to restore it and remember this history of our community. One last thing, Stephen Foster was born in Lawrenceville. We have a historic house tour every year, a house tour every year, and we always look on the history. A number of years ago, we did the historic version of that, where we talked about the history. And I actually portrayed Stephen Foster in that one. His house, where he was born, was on Penn Avenue. And that estate, like the Ewald one, went all the way down to the Allegheny River. There's still a house where Stephen Foster was born, but it's not the real house. The foundation is there, but the upstairs was, you know, completely rebuilt some time ago. But this house is still intact and we have an opportunity with it to preserve part of this history. So, I encourage, you know, that historic designation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We actually do have additional speakers. Our next speaker is Robert Casey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Robert Casey, a resident and small business owner in the 10th Board. I'm calling today in regards to two sewage facility planning modules, 52nd Street Town Homes and Duncan Street Town Homes. Both of these were initially introduced to council May 26th of this year and have been on the agenda five times since. All the same outcome. In particular, the last hearing on July 8th, it was decided to hold legislation for an additional four weeks, which means it won't be back on the agenda until September due to the summer recess. We are a small business that struggled to keep our head above water through the pandemic shutdown. As you're aware, the construction industry was required to cease all operations on March 24th, March 21st. With multiple projects in the works and finances already committed to supplies and labor, it was difficult for us to stay in business. With the lifting of the restrictions, we were able to catch up with some of the backlog work, but we now are at another standstill due to delays of this legislation being passed. This has resulted in additional financial hardship and strain on our business as well as our clients that have expectations to move into their homes. At the introduction of the legislation on May 26th, we have had everything and everything completed and submitted for zoning, planning, DOMI, ALCA San, and many other organizations. I'm asking that council reconsider the legislation again today, prior to the summer recession, and take into consideration all the negative effects this delay will have on business, on our business and other businesses and City of Pittsburgh residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carmen Brown.
Hey, hi, LaVell. This is Carmen Brown from the United Council of District. Listen, I'm going to give my time to a young lady. She's been trying to get on the call. She called me, so I'm going to allow her to take my time. Her name is Gabrielle Gray. Go ahead, Gabby.
Hi, good morning, City Council Representatives. Thank you, Ms. Carmen Brown, for giving me your time. My name is Gabrielle Gray, District 9, with Russian Community. I pray everyone is safe and in good health during these times. I am here to address Resolutions 0539 and 0540, authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's rights and interests, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, including parts of Kelly Street, Frankstown Avenue, Larmor Avenue, Shetland Street, and other streets. In District 12, which closely neighbor District 9, the district I live in. City Council, it is imperative to engage residents before land is given to the URA. In particular, engaging residents that live in lower-income communities without these conversations, oppression caused by institutional and systemic racism within the urban redevelopment gentrification model that impact lower-income residents in Pittsburgh will continue to be a problem. Residents are unable to purchase property and create strategies of generational wealth in their area when the URA holds ownership of land that has been sold unbeknownst to residents. Additionally, it is through the exclusion of residents at the initial phases of development that continue to keep residents, in particular, low-income residents, separate from influence and power. It is the separation from influence and power that continue to perpetuate the poverty-driven violence that notoriously have been at the center of the narrative in communities in District 12 and its neighboring District 9. I thank you so much. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dolores Sands. Is Ms. Sands with us? If not, our next speaker is Deana Stanley. Is Deana Stanley with us? If not, our last speaker is Les Ludwig. Is Mr. Ludwig with us? If not, that does exhaust our list of speakers. We will now move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Burgess.
Mr. Kraus.
I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Rick Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. LaVell Chair.
Here.
Eight members present.
Mr. Wilson is here.
He's here.
Nine members present.
Here. Sorry, bad connection.
Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law Chair by myself. We have one supplemental paper, Bill 575.
Bill 575, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into a Grant Agreement with Allegheny County for the Purpose of Receiving Coronavirus Release Funds in the Amount of $6,200,000, which shall be used to reimburse eligible city expenditure.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to the third paper, Bill 410.
Bill 410, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the City Controller to Transfer a Total of $250,000 from Police Salaries to the Stop the Violence Fund within the 2020 Operating Budget. There's a companion bill.
Mr., Mr., Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would recommend one or two things. It doesn't matter to me which one. Either we wait and talk about this with the other bills that are in public safety or bring them all up now. I'm not sure which one you want to do, but I would prefer to talk about them all together.
I would suggest we just bring them all up now.
Okay.
Okay, that's Bill 404 on page seven. It's ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title II, Fiscal Article V, Special Funds, to add a new chapter of 237, Stop the Violence Fund, to prioritize the prevention of violence and crime within communities and to create a budgetary obligation for the fund.
Motion to...
Madam Clerk?
Public Safety Committee, or, there's another companion bill in Public Safety, I thought.
There's Bill 405, 406, and 487. They're all related to police reform, so we can read all bills.
Gotcha. Bill 405, Ordinance Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title I, Administrative Article III, Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety to Add a New Subsection 116028, Duty to Intervene by Requiring Sworn and Untworn Police Employees and Officers to Stop or Attempt to Stop Another Employee or Officer from Applying Inappropriate Force or Annoyingly Depriving Any Person of Any Constitutionally or Statutorily Guaranteed Right. Bill number 406, Ordinance Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title I, Administrative Article I, General Provisions, Chapter 103, Official Standards by Adding a New Subsection 10306, Provision on Acquisition of Military Equipment or Weaponry. Bill number 487, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code, Title I, Administrative Article III, Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety by Adding a New Section, Section 11614, Chokehold for Addition.
Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
Second.
Councilmember, do you want me to make the motion to amend now and then you can discuss afterwards?
Sure. Why don't you make the motion? There's amendments that you have. If you make the motions to amend, and then let's pass the amendments and then I'll have some general conversation.
Okay. Motion to amend.
What?
The bills that are in front of us. We got an email about them earlier today.
Every bill has an amendment. I think it would just be helpful for the record to have the bill numbers read as to being amended.
All right, so...
It's four, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Cory.
No, I have to write them down. It's 404, 406, 407?
404 is being amended. Bill 405 is amendment by substitution. Bill 406 is an amendment by substitution.
And these are amendments having worked with the Law Department, the Police Department, and the Public Safety, so that they were all comfortable. And so, what you have are amendments that were driven by that, those conversations. As I promised you, I would work with all of the city to come up with amendments that they could all agree on. And so, these amendments are a result of those prolonged conversations. Law, the Law Department was the keeper of it, but it was really a conversation with Public Safety, with Chief Schubert and Chief Hisrich, who have been great about this. And we've come up with what we think are common sense amendments. And then after that, I'll give some overall comments. And Sean Carter is on the line, who is, who actually helped write the amendments. And so, if you have specific questions, Sean is also on the line to ask, to answer why we did what we did or why Public Safety wanted, requested that we do it this way.
So, we have a motion to amend on the table. We need a second.
Second.
All those in favor of amending, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Any discussion on the amendments?
Who has the floor?
I'll yield the floor.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. I just, just for the public edification, these are very important pieces of legislation. And I think it would be important, especially if there's an amendment by substitution that reintroduces the bill within its entirety post a public hearing, I think it would be important just to go over the basic fundamentals as to how and why the bills have been amended.
You're right.
So, Sean, the first amendment by substitution is Bill 405, which is the duty to intervene. Can you walk us through those amendments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And for the public, my name is Sean Carter, Special Assistant to the Office of Councilman Ricky Burgess. Thank you for having me here today. So, Bill number 2020-0405, the ordinance imposing the duty to intervene. These were amendments worked out with the cooperation of the Department of Public Safety and the Law Department. The major changes simply clarify that the duty to intervene only exists inside of the city's geographic boundaries, because there are legal concerns about exercising police power or disciplining police officers for things that happen outside the city. But it only applies to sworn officers and that an officer is not mandated to literally step in front of a bullet to stop another officer from violating the law. For example, it's a little bit more broad than that, but that's the general gist of it is if an officer sees somebody, an officer is not obligated to impose upon his or herself bodily harm to stop another officer.
Yeah. Sean, thank you. Can I, I have the floor, right? I can make comment as he introduces. I'm in full agreement with this bill. I was, I was dumbstruck, confounded, and appalled at the fact that a man was murdered by a police officer and three officers stood by and didn't feel the internal integrity to intervene and say, get off that man. So, I'm fully supportive of this bill and certainly will be voting in the affirmative. Would you go on the next amendment, please?
The next amendment by substitution is Bill 406, which is the prohibition on acquisition of military equipment.
Okay, Bill number 406, the prohibition on the acquisition of military equipment. The amendments to this ordinance took more work than the other ones in order that the legislation matched the intent. And after hearing Chief Schubert, both at the Post Agenda last week, and Reverend Burgess had a meeting with Chief Schubert and Director Hisrich, he's concluded that a blanket ban was inappropriate. And some background on that, the armored personnel carrier, which is the source of some controversy, including for Reverend Burgess, who had very serious problems with it being used in other capacities back, you know, a decade ago. But on April the 4th, 2009, on Fairfield Street in Stanton Heights, when three officers of the Bureau, Shirley, Maely, and Kelly, were gunned down by Richard Poplasky responding to a domestic violence call, the Bureau had to use that vehicle to bring that standoff to a, to an end. And in late, in late October 2018, at the Tree of Life, they had to use that personnel carrier to extract, you know, would-be victims or innocent victims and get officers in to bring that, that crisis to a halt. So, Chief Schubert powerfully made the point that there is a valid use for that vehicle. Reverend Burgess advised them that they need to develop a policy by which it's going to be used and when. But after that conversation, he no longer felt comfortable outright banning the bear. And that is the nickname of the armored personnel carrier that the Bureau owns. And so, this, the amendments to this ordinance lay out a specific list of items that the police, barring council's approval, cannot procure. And we can go through it. Let me pull that up. Sorry, just bear with me, computers. I'm so used to paper that this shift to everything on computer is just a little tricky. Weaponized aircraft, so attack helicopters and weaponized drones, crowd-controlled munitions containing chloroacetophenone or CN gas, wooden baton rounds used in crowd control operations, military surplus weapon systems that are intentionally made for civilian law enforcement and specific only to military operations, and military armored vehicles not specifically designed for enforcement use. And as an example is the MRAP, the Mine-Resistant Ambush-Protected Vehicle, which the Army, which the Army stopped buying in 2012. They stopped, the manufacturers stopped making them, but there's obviously a replacement model. So, vehicles of that type. And I'll, I'll yield for questions.
Okay, Sean, thank you. The, I had some minor, well, not minor, I had reservations about this bill. However, with your explanation, I would argue the large portion of my reservations have been resolved. My, what, what sticks with me and gives me pause is the, the, the overreach, I believe, of many, as their belief or opinion relates to the Second Amendment. And the idea that an individual can own 1,000 weapons of varying degree of killing ability, and there are those that would defend one's right to have those guns, and then to take away the, the right, if lack of a better word, for our police officers to defend themselves and us against such kind of weaponry is what gives me pause. I may abstain on this today. I will most likely vote it and then just enter into a discussion with the chief and the Public Safety Director to flesh it out a little bit more. But that is my one reservation on, on this bill, that clearly citizenry constituency needs to be protected from people that believe caches of weapons are the norm, and police officers need to be able to defend us and themselves. officers need to be able to defend us, um, and themselves, it was not a situation that we created, but it's one that we absolutely need to, uh, be cognizant of and most likely have to defend ourselves from, but I appreciate you, your explanation has been very helpful.
I, I, I actually can respond to that if, if the chairman will indulge me, um, if you remember, after the incident in Stanton Heights on April the fourth, two thousand and nine, this council authorized the Bureau to purchase specially made, um, rifles that were the MP fifteens, which are similar to the AR fifteen, but it's a special law enforcement model, and that has not changed and will not change by this legislation, um, I think there's an obvious concern that, um, there are situations where our officers could find themselves very badly outgunned, um, and they need to be able to respond to that to protect public safety, and so this doesn't touch that.
I appreciate it, I, I, thank you, I, I, something tells me I may just hold back today and have the same, uh, in, a more in-depth discussion with law enforcement that I'm having with you, uh, but, uh, and, um, and I'll leave it at that, uh, but thank you, it, it's been very helpful, uh, and if there are amendments to forty seven, would you speak to those as well, please?
I would defer to the Chair on Bill four eighty seven.
So there's not an amendment to forty seven?
Four, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow. Did we?
The prohibition against chokeholds, Mr. Chair.
No, there's no amendments.
There's not, that's fine, I'm happy to support that, I, 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 I hope, uh, uh, I'm happy to support, thank you.
Clarity, this was actually already the city, Pittsburgh City's police practice, um, just, just puts it in code.
Well, Mr. Chair, if you'll indulge me, I believe that, and that it should be that way, that, uh, uh, police departments will change with leadership, cities will change with mayoral and council leadership, and, uh, a, a, anything that, that would empower a law enforcement officer to subdue a, uh, a suspect, uh, by use of force in the neck area needs to be codified, I, and I agree, and I'm happy to support, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion, as the Councilman Smith, I see Wilson, um, so we're, so we're, just for clarity, we're discussing all the bills in their totality, uh, Madam President?
Thank you, I just want to thank you and Reverend for working so well on these, and working with the, um, chief and, uh, the director, but I do want to say that we do have another post, a public hearing tonight, we have another post agenda on Monday, and during that post agenda, we're going to have the, um, some members of the actual rank and file, the FOP, um, at the table, and I'd like to ask them some of these questions, and so, and I did say that I think that we should wait until we hear from the public, I'm going to abstain today on all the bills on everything, although some of them make sense, I mean, the chokehold, the, um, you know, duty to intervene, they make sense, but, um, I still want to make sure we have a thorough conversation prior to voting, because they are so serious, and they, they, um, and there may be things that we've never heard of or never thought of, uh, but I, I can't imagine that there would be for those two things, but I, I do think that, I said that from the beginning, I would wait until we heard from the public, and that's what I intend on doing with all these bills, including the Stop the Violence Fund, all of them.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Wilson?
I guess, uh, Sean, I had a question about the vehicle that you mentioned in two thousand and nine, and also in Tree of Life, now, um, so that will be outside of this, this ban of militarized weapons, are, it, how does that vehicle differ from the SWAT vehicle? And is a SWAT vehicle something that we purchase, is that something the county purchases? How does that, how does that work?
Well, my understanding is the Bureau purchases its own equipment, um, it manages its own special deployment division, um, I think it's euphemistically referred to as a SWAT, but, um, it is the special deployment division that's housed in Zone Six, um, in the West End, um, and I think for specific questions, you'd have to ask the chief?
Yeah, because I wanted to ask the question of whether or not this, um, in any way prevents the, the SWAT vehicle from, from being purchased, or, or how that vehicle differs from the vehicle that was used on two thousand and nine, and also Tree of Life.
But I can tell you that the Director of Public Safety stated that generally they purchase their equipment tailor, tailor-made for the needs of the Bureau.
Hmm, is the chief on the line, or the, or the, uh, Public Safety Director?
They were unable to attend this morning, they're currently in a meeting, and so they could not be here this morning.
Is there anyone else on the line that might know, might, uh, know what our purchase agreements are with the SWAT vehicles?
I'm looking through, um.
Is Bill Arbanik on the line?
He is.
He may know. Bill, are you there?
Yes, I am, uh, can you repeat the question for me?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, uh, what are, how we purchase our SWAT vehicles, and if, if these will be included in the ban?
Uh, these would be purchased through the Equipment Leasing Authority, in, in most cases, uh, sometimes they, uh, they go through the Regional Emergency Management Service as well too, uh, but if they, uh, come under as re-owning them, they would be, uh, purchased for the Equipment Leasing Authority, and there would be money dedicated, uh, to council, uh, you vote on a, uh, plan, uh, during the budget, uh, portion, that shows the vehicles that are planned to be purchased.
Hey Bobby, the, can I, can I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Bobby, the, what this attempts to do is to stop us from buying surplus military equipment, not new equipment that police force buys all the time, most of those SWAT vehicles are new things that the police buy that's meant for civilian use, what this is designed to do is for us not to buy tanks, Apache helicopters, you know, surplus military-grade equipment, not civilian heavy armored equipment.
That's great, because I wanted to clarify for the public, because I've been getting a lot of, I, I've been getting a lot of, um, questions about this, and I just want to bring clarity, I just want to bring, bring clarity to that, because I think it's.
Two separate, the two separate things, this is, this is, this, we're banning surplus equipment that was made for military use to be used in Desert Storm, a lot of police, that's what happened to Ferguson, right, they bought lots of leftover military stuff, and you, and adapted to civilian use, we don't do that, we buy civilian stuff that's designed for civilian use.
Great, I just want to make a point of clarity there, just so we, just so the, just so I can walk away and, and, uh, clearly tell the public this, so, uh, but this also, in terms of, uh, the military, uh, purchasing, this also doesn't, uh, prevent us from purchasing something that is outside of, um, uh, like some sort of emergency equipment for flooding, this, this keeps it, we're still able to purchase all that.
And under this legislation, they can come to council for an override, so even if it's on, remember, this ban list did not just come from me, we talked about it together at Public Safety, so they're comfortable with this list, but the way it's written, that if there's a need to buy something even on the list, they can come for counsel and get dispensation for that purchase, so there's a way to get whatever this they need, it's just they can't buy it without our participation.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Thank you, um, Councilman Cogu.
You're on mute.
Okay, how about now, we all right?
Yep.
I just wanted to start by saying, Councilman Lavelle, Council, Councilman Burgess, um, I really appreciate your leadership on this, I got to tell you, and, um, Sean, you're doing a remarkable job, Rev's a lucky man to have you there, okay, you, you, you're, you're doing, you answered most of my questions, I will tell you about the bills, for instance, when we were talking about sworn and unsworn, this was a major question, and you would have held me back on this, so we, we eliminate meter maids and anybody else who's on the, the, the FOP payroll was the right thing to do, so it's just sworn officers, correct?
Will you say the question?
He asked if this just applies to sworn officers in the Bureau, and I answered yes.
Yes, great, so that was a big sticking point, I'm glad to hear that, um, and the armored vehicles, uh, you know, you made all the right changes for me, so, uh, and Rev, I really appreciate you working with Public Safety on this, you know, for me, that was, that was a key element, so, um, I'll be in favor of all the bills, except the Stop the Violence, uh, I'm going to abstain on that, and wait until, like Councilwoman Kill Smith says, we hear, I'll, you know, as far as what this effect might have on the Bureau, so, and I think you said they're in support of it, meaning, uh, Schubert and, and Hisrich, Rev, which is good to hear, but, um, I will be abstaining as well, abstaining on that today, but again, appreciate your leadership, I, I, I got to tell you, I was very nervous, very, a lot of anxiety when the bills start hitting the table, and, um, you know, you've proven to me that you're working for our party, good, well, thanks.
Any further discussion from members? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye on all bills, uh, forgive me, uh, one abstention on, uh, militarization, forgive me, I lost the agenda.
This is on, we're, we're on the, on the amendments, right, we're on the amendments.
Okay, no, aye on all bills.
Thank you, one abstention on the amendments. Thank you, now on to the bills, is there any conversation for the bills?
Mr. Lavelle, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I realized, um, in preparing this, that now, because I've been on council so long, there's at least three members of council who don't know my history of working in this area, and so, uh, if you don't mind, if I, and because we're in this historic moment, I kind of want to just, uh, maybe walk us through my thinking, so that you get a sense of what my priorities are, if you don't, so, just for a minute, if you indulge me, um, my goal as a member of council is to make Pittsburgh a city for all, today, we are the most livable city in America for some people, but we're the worst city in America for black people, I have been on council for thirteen years with a mission to change that reality, I have worked with Allegheny Conference, nonprofits, schools, entrepreneurs, government, to enhance economic vitality in every part of our city, um, over the last years, thirteen years though, I've also been on the forefront of trying to empower black people and black communities, and so, the legislation that I'm grateful for council passing, Black Pittsburgh Matters, is my and our most intelligent understanding of how to move our city forward, institutional racism is alive and well, and we voted, there's a public health crisis in our city, and one of the things I think we need to understand is that the, the groups who are disaffected get to decide what it looks like, right? I think that in terms of gender discrimination and sexism, I'm not a woman, so I don't get to decide what that feels like, and what that looks like, I think women get to decide what sexism looks like, um, I am not part of the LG, LGBT community, and I have great sympathy for their discrimination, but to be honest with you, I can't decide what homophobia looks like, or discrimination looks like, because I believe that community ultimately gets to decide what that looks like, at the same time, Ben, I also believe that, um, in terms of racism, as an African-American male, I get to decide, at least from my perspective, what that looks like and feels like, and so, um, Black Pittsburgh Matters has three parts, uh, Black Lives Matter, which is to protect the health and safety of black people, Black Communities Matter, rebuilding, uh, black communities and housing, social services and amenities, Black Wealth Matters, increased employment and entrepreneurship, um, as I, I think that, you know, I, I hear that Councilwoman Strasberg is kind of moving to this idea that we really have to get to the core of the problem, the core of the problem is the effect of institutional racism in black communities, right, and in black wealth, and we know that in black communities, to rebuild them, housing is the core element, and I will, um, be talking about housing probably for the next five, four, five years that I'm on council now, that will be, become my, my, my priority is housing, um, I don't, I, it's not that I'm an expert on housing, it's just that I've met with the experts, I met with Richard Baron, who invented really the Choice HUD model, I've met with Mercedes Mendez, drove her around the city in my car, she was the former Deputy Director of HUD, and both of them were great impacts on how to rebuild black communities, and I have had the great fortune of partnering with the Housing Authority, the URA, and developers to rebuild Garfield Commons, Lorimer Point, Lorimer Cornerstone, Homewood Station, Hamilton Kelly, and Addison Terrace, uh, we've built together in our city probably something about two thousand new units of housing over my time on council, and I think that's been important, the problem though is, rebuilding black communities will take a long time, when we put in additional services, when we rebuild their housing, when we build the business district, when we help their schools, all those amenities are important, they take time, uh, Cornerstone, which is four hundred units by itself, is a five-year project, it just takes time, and so now, these bills are part of this, uh, Black Lives Matter movement, we have this national movement, um, that we're trying to protect the health and safety of black people, um, many of you perhaps do not know that before I was a member of council, I spent ten years as a member of the Board of Health, as one of its directors, I spent twelve years as a social service provider, providing, um, social, uh, services in the areas of substance abuse, mental health, education, and corrections, I'm the former, um, Director of Education at Allegheny County Jail, I've spent a lifetime trying to understand these issues, and the church that I am, I pastor for the last thirty-six years, when I came to council, the corner that my church stood was called the most dangerous place in Pennsylvania, they called Homewood, uh, a block from where I was born and raised, and where my church is, they used to call it Klitsberg Pistolevania, it was the most dangerous place in the city, there was murders and shootings in that community, um, in, at, at, at rapid numbers, which is one of the reasons that I came to council, and so when I came to council, I partnered with Public Safety then, as I have now, and I want to thank, uh, all the public safety directors, including our present Director, Director Hisrich, all of our chiefs of police, including Chief Schubert, and so when I first came to council, I think I have been the most active member in introducing police reform, I started with the Jordan Miles Reform Agenda, which asked for greater transparency, greater technology, greater training, and we, um, did a, a smorgasbord, now you may undo a, a smorgasbord of legislation, the Pittsburgh Initiative to Reduce Crime, it got renamed to, called GVI, the Maryland Authority Assessment Model to Stop Domestic Violent Murders in City, ShotSpotter, the Gunshot Detection System, started off in my district, now has been expanded to almost a third of the city, cameras in neighborhoods, cameras in officers, cameras in police cars, the annual report, the National Initiative to Build Community Trust, I called David Kennedy directly, begged him to make Pittsburgh one of the initial, um, uh, cities, and, um, and he did, so, the reason that I stopped talking about these initiatives, and I will say this for the first time now publicly, is that when Chief Cameron McClay became chief, I was in the forefront of initiating all of these reforms, and he said to me, he said, Reverend, with you, we want to do what you, what you're doing is exactly right, but if you lead this, the officers will not follow it, because there will be, um, some hostility that you not being an officer and a layperson, and if you do me a favor, let me lead it, it was, it's the same stuff you're saying, just be quiet, and I have, for the last, since then, I have been very quiet about reforms, even though I initiated them, even though I brought them to Pittsburgh, you've not heard me talk about them, because I'm more concerned about them being done, and so now, at this moment, the National Initiative to Build Community Trust has three components, one is implicit bias training, two is procedural justice, and three is racial reconciliation, and so this thing that we're about now, at this moment of time, I am attempting to do forms of racial reconciliation, so let me, for the first time, explain something to the public and to council that maybe the public doesn't know, certainly the council does know, no matter what people are saying, we cannot defund the police, we do not have the legal ability to do so, there is an amendment to the Second Class City Act, called the Policeman's Civil Service Act in nineteen fifty-one, that act explicitly states that we cannot fire police except for the lack of money, we can't fire them for political reasons, this council, even if it wanted to, could not cut off forty percent of the police, because of that, and the collective bargaining, and Act one eleven, we are prohibited from doing that, it cannot happen, so even though we've heard passion from the community, and this is what my challenge is to them, if you give me legislation that's legal and doable, I'll introduce it, I've done what I've done because it's the most I can do, given the law and what I know with. I've done, because it's the most I can do, given the law and what I know with our city. They have led this fight. I've simply taken their ideas and tried to put it in legislation. Seeing that I know that we cannot defund the police, we cannot. What we can do, and what we must do, is have a conversation of what rightsizing the police looks like. Right now, the police force will grow exponentially. Every, the police is $110 million. If you add the pensions and overall public safety is probably a third of our budget, at least. If we do not change, we will hire new officers, and the number of officers will grow. The only way to have this conversation intelligently, and honestly, and openly about defunding the police is to stop hiring new officers. Every year, 10% of the police force retires. If we don't hire new officers, we can have the conversation about rightsizing the police. If we hire new officers, then any conversation and anything we say is actually disingenuous, because what we're actually doing is voting. To be honest with you, I have said, this is what I believe for true. I've said this over and over again. I believe we need less officers and higher pay. I am, I am a fan of paying our officers higher wages, so they don't have to have secondary employment, higher wages, so they have to go to the suburbs. I am a fan. I have been on the forefront of saying, I will pay them as much as we can afford. But at the same time, I believe this, we are in a process of uncontrolled hiring of officers, and we are not making our city safer. Because of institutional racism, our justice system, it is not the police officers are bad. They're good people. But the system is not designed to help African-Americans. The emphasis, there are these parts of law enforcement and of, of making streets safer. There's, there's prevention, intervention, policing, prosecution, incarceration, reintegration. We put all our money into policing, into, into incarceration, and in prosecution. That, and you get what you pay for. We put almost no money into prevention, intervention, and in reintegration programs, even though we know they work. The programs that we've brought to the city, including the PERC program, which is now the Group Violence Initiative, has brought the violence down to unbelievably low rates. Unfortunately, we have never fully funded those programs. They've been working on shoestring budgets. We have guys, workers, out there preventing deaths, preventing violence, yet they're paid on a shoestring budget. If we're serious about reducing crime and reducing police officers, we have to reduce the violence in black communities. The way we do that is through these evidence-based programs. The Stop the Violence Fund is not a fund that Ricky Burgess will control. It's a fund that will be set, will be, will be sat, administered by a group of people, including the Public Safety Director, including the Chief of Police, including the Stop the Violence Coordinator, including the Mayor's Office, including City Council. And so what I'm proposing is that this is the first fruit of putting money into programming, into the needed social services. There are at least three, two or three services I am very passionate about. It has been for many years. One, of course, is the Group Violence Initiative Program. I know that saves lives. The other program that we've done in the target area, but we've not done citywide, is embedding social workers in police, with police officers, and at police stations. I am not a fan of doing it as a standalone, because I think the time when they need a police support, it should be there. But I am a big fan of embedding social workers in, because many of the calls that police receive should not go to police, domestic violence calls, and, and, you know, just bad kid calls. And many of those things for substance abuse and for mental health issues, you need to train professional. And I would like, so, in my mind, this, and we've only putting in a little bit of money this year, it will grow every year after, because this becomes the tangible expression of our priority. If we really want to make services the cornerstone of public safety, we have to start somewhere. And I'm starting this year with this nominal amount that will increase percentage-wide every year. I did not say it has to be taken for public safety, but it reflects a percentage of the public safety budget, because it reflects our priorities. So I just wanted to give you a sense. I have been doing this work for the whole time I'm on council. I do it very, sometimes openly, sometimes quietly. I have the highest respect for law enforcement. Anybody who's, who risked their life, puts their life on the line for me and my family and my community needs to be applauded, honored, protected, paid, and, 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 and supported. And I have tried to do that. At the same time, we have to be aware that the structure of policing is unfortunately, the way it's currently practiced, promoted, is hostile to the needs of poor black communities. And so we now have to strike a balance. How do we strike a balance with having needed police? We know we need them, have to have police. And, and then at the same time, how do we get increased services so that the, the social needs, which are the real cause of these violence, and this new prevention program, the diversion program, is, has my support, and of course, is in the beginning. So what I've tried to do is begin to have this conversation, and to have it openly and honestly. But if we don't stop hiring police, you cannot have this conversation, because the conversation is over. You've already decided that you're going to invest in police and not in the community. I want to make it very clear. Once you hire them, you can't fire them, you can't get rid of them. We are responsible for them for the rest of their career. And so, so I want to make it clear. The only way we can have this conversation openly and honestly is to freeze hiring, decide what our number should be, put money into social programming now, and then work together with the future of our city should look like. That's what I believe. That's what I'm laying, and then, while we're doing this, let's tackle the larger problems. The housing problem, the, the substance abuse problems, the lack of affordable housing, for, especially for gay, lesbian, transgender women. That's a major problem in our city, right? And transgendered people. And so let's tackle the big problem. Over time, it's going to take us years to do that, but let's also have that serious discussion about public safety in the black community also right now. So thank you for this moment. Hopefully I've laid out my perspective, and I'm, I'm willing to have an interactive conversation about what I think.
Thank you. Any further members? Madam President?
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Reverend. You make a lot of good points, and I'm probably going to be supportive of most of this legislation. But I do want to say that I, again, I'm going to wait until I hear from the public, because one of the things they've, they've said repeatedly is that we're not listening to them. So I feel like, let's listen to them. Even if we end up with this where we are, at least we've had several opportunities to hear from them. And I think that we also need to hear, because the police also feel like we're not hearing from them, that even though we're hearing from the command staff and the directors and the administration side, we're not hearing from the people actually doing the work on the ground. And there are a lot of great officers. And we all know that there's some that we need to, to, to get rid of, and that they're not, you know, they're just not part of the great team that we do have. And I think a lot of our officers are doing a lot of things. But when you talk about rightsizing the police department, in my district, people are calling all the time for police, and they're actually frustrated, because there's not enough police. And I think the way to make this department better is to grow the minority participants and the employees. And I think that, there should be some connection with Pittsburgh Public Schools, that actually, I know we have these programs, but I never see them leading to bigger numbers in minorities being hired in the city of Pittsburgh. But I think that's part of it. But, and we talk about the social services and the programs. I mean, I want to be clear, our officers are like a gap program. They fill in where nobody else does. So when people do call and make phone calls, a lot of times, the social workers and social services are not showing up. And I was, and shared in the other day, when the exact situation happened, a person just raging out of control, and it was the police officers trying to calm the situation down. They're not social workers, and it was just very difficult. So I want, I'm concerned when we do these programs, that we're going to fund all these things, and still not have any results, and we're going to end up calling the police again, and it's going to be the same thing. So I hope we do it slowly, and as pilot programs, so we can make sure that we're figuring out how to make this work, because I think everybody wants to see people get help. Nobody wants to see anybody in prison. Nobody wants to see anybody a victim of a crime. And, and, and nobody wants to see people not getting the help that they need to really live the life that they can live. I think, I think all of us want to see people getting help. But I, but I am concerned that the response with social services is a concern. And when we talk about all the things that are needed in the community, one of the biggest things we need right now is, is education and employment, I think. And along with the social services, but I think that we're not seeing a lot of that success in some of our schools. It's really disheartening of some of the things that we're seeing. So I think when we're tackling all this stuff, we should have the Pittsburgh Public Schools who have their work cut out for them. I want to be honest, they have a lot of, a lot of challenges. I'd love to see them as part of these conversations. And that's it for me. I just want to say that I'm going to abstain today. Until we hear, tonight, we have another public hearing. Then Monday, we have the post-agenda. And we're going to hear from different advocates. We're going to hear from the police department, the actual rank and file, and some other folks. And then I think we'll probably be right where we are today. But I want to thank you for really working through things. I tell people all the time, actually, I want to be honest, you've gotten some compliments from people who told me that, on the policing side, who said that they were surprised at how, how well you worked through these concerns and, and did things. But I also heard from, from residents that said that they were pleased with the things that you're doing. So, so I do want to make sure that you know that people are saying good things too, not just, there's not just a lot of concerns, a lot, a lot of people are saying good things too, about how, how, how you work through concerns. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Councilman. So the, we're considering all four bills together, and I think I'm feeling the same as Councilwoman Smith, and I appreciate Councilwoman Burgess, especially your long and deep policy experience with these issues. I'm not sure our public has that same depth of experience, right? Especially the, the public, I think, that are really newly engaged in this conversation, and nor do I. And although I've kind of gone, I've experienced some of it while on council with you for the last six years or so. And so I, I heard you say last week, or maybe it was even yesterday, that, you know, it's important to, to kind of take advantage of this momentum, and that we should act before we lose the momentum in the movement. But I almost feel like you're even ahead of that momentum. So that these bills, because you've been working on this so long, I'm not really hearing everybody else's comfort level in it. And again, I like, I think Councilwoman Smith just said that, you know, maybe we won't ever make any changes in them, but I still feel like people need to catch up a little bit and process. So I, it's awkward that we have council recess starting next week. I don't think, I mean, considering how involved the constituents are in the conversation, and really attuned to it, I think that momentum is going to be just as strong in September, when we come back, as it is right now. And I wish we just had another week on our schedule to, to just spend more intense time in conversation. And I feel like everybody kind of would get there. But I'm going to abstain today. We do have this one more public hearing. We do have this one more post-agenda, and see if kind of everybody digests, kind of like what actually are in these bills. I, I mean, I've had to kind of clarify for some people, and kind of paste them parts of the language, and explain some things myself, even though I can't really attest to as deeply and authoritatively to the policy merits of them as, as you can. And I really appreciate that you've done these, these conversations with the police, and know these kind of technical, even with the, with the vehicles, right? I mean, this was kind of new information to me today, to hear about the, and I just still have learning to do, I feel like. And we all, I think a lot of us do. So I'm going to abstain today. These, this probably is the right start to this conversation. And as you also point out, we still do have a whole budget discussion in front of us. I want to emphasize that the bill for the Stop the Violence Fund is additive. As you said, it's matched to the police budget. So it is, let's say, if the police budget was a flat 100 million, you know, it would add 10 million in the first year, right? If we, we could hypothetically double the police budget, I don't think anybody in the world wants to do that, or wants us to do that. But if the police budget next year went up to 200 million, the Stop the Violence Fund would get 20 million. And similarly, if the police budget next year somehow, which is probably not technically feasible, went to 50 million, then the Stop the Violence Fund would only get five. So I just kind of wanted to, to say out loud kind of what that math looked like, because I think a lot of people were confused by that. So I look forward to more discussion. We still have till Tuesday, but I'll probably just abstain today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
You're on mute. All right. Sorry about that. I, I had another question about the, the bill, the Stop the Violence Bill. Is this in any coordination with the, the new office that the mayor is, is, you know, I think there was a press release about the Health and, Health and Wellness Department?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Reverend Burgess or Sean, feel free to jump in. At this moment, they're not intrinsically tied together, but they are very complementary of one another. The office that the mayor has created is looking to do more of the social service work. Now, this would, so for GVI, things of that nature, this would be able to be supportive of that. But his, the Stop the Violence Fund is in an effort to put, begin putting money towards the social service side of things, so that, as Reverend Burgess mentioned, you're not having the police show up to the domestic violence or to the unruly child, rather the social worker, whomever more appropriate, is dealing with that. And the office that the mayor recently created is also being designed to be able to do that sort of work. So they're complementary of one another, although they're not technically linked.
So that's not exactly where we're initially thinking the funding would come for that?
The, the funding for the mayor's office?
Yes, yes.
I believe he'll have to dictate how that's going to be funded. I would expect that that would be reflective of this year's budget. It's my personal opinion that what we ultimately have to do is, one, dedicate our, our dollars to these efforts. But if we're really going to fund them at the levels that they really should be funded at, we're going to need private and philanthropic support.
Okay. Yeah, I was just.
To run GVI, and this is just a rough guess, to run GVI at the truly appropriate level, you're talking probably $3 million.
Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I want.
Bobby, Mr. Wilson, there's something that you probably know, but we're not thinking of, that this, there, we're using the same words for different components. There is a Stop the Violence Initiative, and the public probably is a little confused about this. Inside public safety, there is a Stop the Violence Coordinator. As part of that work, there is a Stop the Violence Steering Committee, made up of the Chief of Police, the Public Safety Director, the, myself, Councilman LeVell, a variety of people who meet monthly to over, and the Group Violence Initiative people who, who meet monthly to oversee this process. So we've been all, even before the mayor's new hire, we have been monthly overseeing this process. So in my mind, that person will just join the team that's already doing that work. What this does is it simply funds the programming that we already have agreed needs to be done. So it won't be me who decides. The police and the, if you bring the police here, they're going to tell you they want to do more programming. They just don't have the money to do it. They want to do, the programming that I've mentioned is not programming that I've come out of, you know, my hat to do. It's, it's, it's programming we've been talking about for two, three years, that the police want to do. They want social workers. They want a bigger GVI. They just, you know, don't have, they don't, their own budget, they don't, yeah, they don't have the money to do it. And so what I'm suggesting is, let's give them the money to do the programs that we already have all agreed need to be done. And so this is not, so in my mind, the mayor's new office will be part of this team of workers who work together to improve public safety. So I'll stop talking with that.
Okay. Well, thanks for some clarification, and really just, you know, the goal is to, is to start finding where the money will be. And then, you know, it's, it's nice to know that there, you know, there's, you know, room for conversation about how to coordinate that. And so I just wanted to ask that question, but I also just want to take this moment to commend the Councilman, Reverend Ricky Burgess, for his efforts here. When we first met, prior to, you know, prior to coming on, onto council, When we first met, uh, prior to, you know, prior to coming on, onto council, he, he had, uh, you know, expressed, uh, his deep passion for his work as a policymaker and as, uh, how he really shows his activism through legislation. And I just wanted to, uh, you know, really thank you and your office for really leading the charge here in this, in this time. I think that, um, you know, there's some times where you may feel like you're being dragged down. I really appreciate those times when, these times when you're rising above that. So thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further members for discussion?
Just, just one quick thing, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to be clear, you know, when we talk about, and Rev, I'm, I'm on board with you. When you talk about having social workers with inside the police department. But I just want the public to know, you know, I don't think a social worker is ever going to be put in a situation. I, I believe the police will have to clear the situation, make sure that it's not a dangerous or imminent situation before then the social worker is ready and available to come in and help. If, once the police make, make the initial, um, you know, entry into whatever the situation is, that then the social worker comes in. I don't foresee social workers going on calls not knowing what's behind the door. So I do believe they'll have to work in conjunction and, and that's just my thought. Maybe, you know, maybe I'm wrong, you know, but, but that's, I don't want people thinking we're sending social workers into what may be potential dangerous situations. I don't think we'll get them to do it, to tell you the truth. So I, I do believe it's going to have to be in conjunction with the police still. But once they determine this is a case for a social worker, the police can then leave the scene, unlike they were here all day a couple of weeks ago for a situation that was just undetermined. So, so that's the way I envision that. This, um, also Rev, when you talk about group violence intervention, uh, I'd love to get together with them and see, you know, just to find out more as to what they do. You know, I think you and I think Councilman Lavelle also, uh, you know, seem to have a lot of confidence in, in the measures that they do to, to prevent violence. So, um, so I guess I'll have my office reach out to you and I would love to sit down with them and see. And in any other groups that you feel might be worthy of, you know, taking on such a challenge. That's it for me. I think the conversation's been great between us, you know? I've learned a lot. I think other council members have come a far way into things. As Councilwoman Gross said, it's almost a shame we have to take off the next three weeks because, you know. But again, as she said, I think the intensity and the passion is still going to be there. So I look forward to continuing it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further members? If not, um, I think we're ready to vote. So this is on all four bills or maybe five. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye. Uh, Mr. Chair, Madam Clerk, aye on all bills, extension for today on 404, please. No, 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 I'm sorry, 406. Thank you.
Aye on all bills for me, abstention, abstention on 410.
Councilwoman Smith, are you abstaining on all?
Abstaining on all.
And Councilwoman Gross, you're abstaining on all bills?
Abstaining on all bills, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Bills are then recommended.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have to leave the call. I have a phone call to make. I do want to register simply one vote, and that's an aye vote on Bill 0492. And so I want to just register that, that vote, but then I have to, unfortunately, I have to leave the call. I have another urgent matter I have to attend to.
Understood.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Reverend, before you get on, it's 492, the, the, I believe that's the, yeah, there's an amendment to that. Are you registering a?
I'm aye vote on the amendment, I vote on this. So I, I, I am registering a aye vote on the bill as it will be amended. All right, Madam, Madam Clerk?
Oh, not it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rev.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, there's not a bill 4092. I don't.
492.
It's 0492. We're not there yet. It's under, uh, I think it's in Mr. Wilson's committee, but I need to double check. But there is a bill 0492. But we're not there yet.
It's deferred bill on land use.
Page 11, page 11, page 11.
It's our former, it's.
Is it the Actwell money?
Yes.
Okay. With amendment. Well, amendment's being offered on the.
There will be one offer, we just haven't gotten there yet. So we're now at Bill 51, 512.
Bill 512, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with John Passadolis for professional legal services for an employment-related matter before the Human Relations Commission, with an amount not to exceed $24,000.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Councilman Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Though I believe that advancing this bill goes directly against everything we should safeguard as public officials charged withholding the public trust and that the statute that compels this bill to advance will have lasting consequence for employees wanting to come forward and seek relief from a hostile and compromised work environment. And after lengthy discussion with our city solicitor, I recuse myself from the vote on Bill 512.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman O'Connor?
Yes, I also have to recuse myself from this vote, talking to the solicitor. Um, and just to mention, um, a claim in the torts court, I think it's section 8501. Um, just a general conversation about torts. It goes in saying that anybody that is a, it can go from assistant high school football coach to a code enforcement officer, to a foster parent, to a wrestling coach, to a wrestler, to an independent contracted doctor through the state, that they can claim the torts act and the taxpayer money has to be spent on their defense. So therefore, talking to the solicitor and the law department, I also have to recuse myself from this vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two recusals. Bill is recommended. Uh, Bill 543.
Bill 543, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 55, which authorized the mayor through the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding to plan and implement the creation of Financial Empowerment Centers Fund within the city and further providing for an agreement expenditures not to exceed $20,000 for this stated purpose. Amendment includes additional $60,000 for the Financial Empowerment Centers to hire an additional financial coach through Neighborhood Allies.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, um, that this is a wonderful program that the administration has been working on for some time through the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment. Um, and it's the kind of thing I think council should look at more closely to see, um, as a model for expansion, right? We've just, it's been operating on just a little bit of money, but it's the kind of thing that can build household wealth and stabilize not only households, um, but communities. So, um, well done, congratulations. And I think we should, the kind of thing that hopefully we'll, we'll have more conversation about it, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to acknowledge the work of Henry Pye. I mean, he's done a lot of work in this, in this area. I don't know, others may have as well. This is, these are the ones that the financial.
Yes, yeah, and you know, I should have mentioned Henry also, yes.
Yeah, okay, so I'll make sure that, because everybody's looking at me, I'm thinking I might be giving the wrong person credit. But no, but Henry's done a lot to get these up and running. But I'd like to see us do, and I've said this before to the administration, instead of these little places here and there, and this little bit of help here and there, to have a resource center for the city of Pittsburgh where everything is under one umbrella and people can get to it. And whether we do that north, southeast, west, central city or one general location, I'd just like to see something where people know where they can go for help, whatever the help may be. But I think that this is a great start.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill 544.
Bill 544, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the total sum of $3,000 in favor of Shanda Harris relating to the final and full settlement of litigation.
We need a motion to hold for an executive session.
Send it.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 It will be held, Bill 545.
545, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of the, of a warrant in favor of Erin Pouschek and her attorney in the amount of $5,000 related to the full and final settlement of charges filed in the U.S. Equal Opportunity, Employment Opportunity Commission and jointly with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission against the city.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held, Bill 546.
Bill 546, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the amount of $5,500 to Robert A. Creo in connection with labor arbitration services.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, but Bill 556.
Bill 556, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Public Safety and Public Works to enter into an agreement for acquisition of real property and execution of related agreements for the sites of the former U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs Facilities, known as the Highland Drive Medical Center, located along the east side of Washington Boulevard, for construction of new facilities and renovation of existing facilities for emergency management and law enforcement uses by City's Department of Public Safety.
Motion to approve. Second.
Can, uh, discussion? This, um, just so members are aware, this is a former VA site. Our current temporary access agreement actually expired on June 30th. And so I need to amend this bill to literally put in one sentence that will allow us to continue to have access to it until the deed is formally transferred over. The clerk does have it, although I apologize for not putting it in front of all members. Um, I will be sure to do so today. But I will read the sentence that needs put in, just so everyone is aware. It'll go into section one. And the sentence is, "Said agreements shall be inclusive of any that provide for the city's temporary license to enter upon the property during the period of July 1, 2020 through September 30 of 2020, in order to perform due diligence as the city prepares to take ownership thereof, conduct limited training, and provide storage capacity for its departments of public safety." That is the one sentence that we need to put in so that we can, can, can continue to access the site. So with some.
Motion, man.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended, thank you very much. Any discussion on the bill? Councilwoman Gross?
So, um, I apologize. Can you clarify for, for members in the public whether this is only a resolution to allow that temporary access? Or is this resolution also moving the city farther down the disposition, which is the word for the federal government selling the site to the city?
The resolution is moving us further down the road, but.
So from what part, place and what, to what place? Because it's, it's a very difficult road, right? Confusing, Rev.
So I would actually, so that I don't mess this up, um, I'm looking for.
I don't know if anyone's here. Who's at the table? And who would it be, like, realist?
Chris Hornstein's here.
Yes, Chris would know.
Yeah, I was looking for Chris. Oh, there he is.
Hello, this is.
Yes, thanks, Director Hornstein. Can you identify yourself for the public?
Absolutely, Chris Hornstein, Assistant Director of Public Works.
And Mr. McDevitt, you're there too. I see you popped up. Do you want to identify yourself?
Yes, this is Peter McDevitt from the Office of Management and Budget.
Thank you both for being, you've been here before, helping us through this. And you've been here, especially last year, we had many discussions about the site. But I just want to acknowledge before I start my questions, that this is a very different moment in the way that our citizens are now really wanting to understand. Every dollar the city of Pittsburgh intends to spend on public safety. That includes this large, large, large capital budget item that I think in itself was a, is a $70 million project. So just to frame it that way, my question was, can you explain to us what is this resolution? Because I've had some, some, you know, constituent emails expressing opinions about it. So I want, I want everybody to have the same information about what do we have in front of us today?
Absolutely, councilperson. So this resolution will authorize the transfer of the property from the federal government to the city of Pittsburgh. Um, this resolution does not authorize us, gives us, I'm sorry, excuse me. This, uh, this resolution, um, essentially allows for the transfer of property. So we would then effectively own the property, specifically for the purposes of emergency management and law enforcement. That's kind of the stipulation of what's called the public benefit conveyance.
So, um, I remember asking this question last year, so I'm going to ask it again. I was surprised that there was a, the public benefit was stipulated to be only for public safety. And I was told in my recollection, because I did not re-watch the discussion, that that stipulation was the VA's stipulation. And I was skeptical when I was told that before, and I'm still kind of skeptical. So, uh, we could all read these agreements. And, but I'm, I understand that the VA would require a justification of public benefit in order to basically be giving the city kind of the right of first refusal or the, the first option on the site. Uh, but can you, either of you elucidate more clearly why and who, um, put in that it's restricted for public safety? Does it, again, is it two, 100 acre site, if I'm not wrong, 100 acre more?
164 acres.
64, how many?
164.
164, okay, so it's right in the middle. At first I thought you said 64 and I thought, oh gosh, I was grossly exaggerating. Okay, but no, so it is very large. It's on that hilltop overlooking the Allegheny River, um, in District 9, on the other side of Washington Boulevard from, from where the zoo is. It's like that other hillside. So, um, so how, what, give us some background on the stipulation.
Absolutely. No, I can, I can provide it. Pete, you can, you can clarify anything that I missed. Thank you. So, um, and it is a very complicated situation, councilperson. So I'm happy to clarify what I can. So the stipulation comes from the fact that, you know, the federal government is essentially giving us to the city for a dollar. So without, that is the, that is the sale price effectively that honor.
And let us, letting us negotiate on it.
Correct.
Solely, but not with, without other people competing.
Correct. That is also correct. And then, um, and to do that, there has to be, you know, the federal, um, regulations that govern this. You know, there has to be a commiserate, uh, public benefit that allows them to do that. They just can't sell it to anybody for a dollar for whatever they want to do for it. Um, and so those public benefit conveyances are limited to a couple, a couple of categories. And one of those categories is law enforcement and emergency management.
What are the other categories?
Peter, do you recall what the other categories were?
And I, I'm reading the text of the bill, so the citizens can just pull up the full text of this bill. And it says it's under federal law, under Title 40, Federal Management Regulations, 41 CFR, Section 102-75.
So some of the other categories off the top of my head, um, I want to say. I want to say there are nine buckets, law enforcement and emergency management are actually two different uses, but they're the only two that you can submit a combined application, because they consider things like police work to be law enforcement, but something like the fire bureau and EMS would be emergency management. So that allowed us to put a joint application for that. But some other uses are for homelessness use, to be used as, or to be used as a port, which is not near, near body of water, it's a lot of things in Pittsburgh are, but it's not on a body of water. To be used as, for parks purposes, or to be used as a highway or transportation. There, there are a few others that I don't remember off the top of my head. But the General Services Administration that acts as the, basically the real estate agent for the federal government goes in and screens the property for what they believe it can be used for in the environment it's in, and that is how they decided that it should be used for law enforcement or emergency management.
You're saying the, the federal inspectors?
Yeah, the General Services Administration-
General Services Administration came to the city and said, we'll only negotiate with you for the $1 thing for basically the right of first refusal kind of situation if we talk about it as law enforcement or an emergency management.
And then it's opened up to anybody that wants to put an application in for those uses, so, we were the only applicant.
Fascinating, and when did that happen?
I believe the fall of 2017.
Fall of 2017. It's curious, while we are right in the middle of our kind of affordable housing task force and all the other kinds of conversation that we were having as a public about affordable housing and the lack thereof. And that it sits, really, again, really, the property lines come almost to touch Highland Park, City Park.
One thing I will note, the, the, the entire property is 164 acres, but only 64 of that is actually like usable to build on.
Because it's that steep hillside?
Yeah.
Steep on the, on the riverside and on the Washington Boulevard side.
Yeah.
They're not really buildable.
Yeah.
So it's been really an interesting prospect, how you would use it for law enforcement, emergency management on this steep hillside. But the 64 acres at the top is what they said. So that's what we were told last year, and again, I was really skeptical that the, the federal government would make that judgment out of the nine or so various uses, but, so now we're faced with either taking it for a dollar for only public safety and, or emergency management.
And yeah, so those are, those are the, the-
Or someone else taking it for only public safety or emergency management.
The other option that is out there is to be purchased at market value. And then you would be able to use it for whatever you want. We don't have the funding to purchase at market value.
Do you know what that market value is? Did the GSA-
They didn't share-
Have some minimum number?
The, the, the option that we would have is to take ownership of the property now for a dollar. And then as we continue to assess what are capabilities of our building on the property, if we come to the realization that we can't use the entire property, or we would need to use it for another purpose, we would be able to carve out a parcel of the property-
Okay, good to know.
-at a later date, and then pay market value for that portion of property.
Okay, so then that would be kind of a future negotiation with GSA, but how much they would accept as, and what would fair market value be, and how they'd determine that?
Yeah. So the legislation today would allow us to take ownership of the property for a dollar, and then we would be guaranteed the property, and then if we decided we needed to renegotiate at a later date, we would have that option down the road.
Because if we don't accept it, then one of two things could happen. Someone else could negotiate, could try to get it for a dollar for some public safety or emergency management use, or could come in at market rate and do basically anything that our zoning permits.
Yes.
Fascinating. Okay, so I, I think that gives, I counsel the refresher and reminder and more detail and the public as well, because again, people have been noticing this, and it's, it's what their attention is on, right? Why make this investment? And I, did I misquote either Director Hornstein or, or anyone else, they, why did I say $70 million? Is that the kind of projected plans in the capital budget for the site? Or did that just come out of nowhere?
So, it, it will be a very large, expensive endeavor. We don't have those final budget numbers now, because we haven't put that extensive of plan forward, because we don't own the property yet. We didn't want to invest in all of those types of plans yet, and, and designs, so we don't know that, what the final cost will be, but this, the idea currently is to replace all of our training academies and all of our administrative headquarters for our public safety.
Right, those, the train, I, I just, I want to be very transparent about this, right? The training facility for all of those recruiting classes that we're now thinking about not doing. Because we just had a discussion earlier in the agenda of how we should-
Well, police is only one bureau. This will also be EMS and fire and public safety and everything that can go up there.
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, I want to be very clear.
Uh, yeah.
Right, so it's, it's EMT, and where are the trainings for EMT right now?
In the Strip District.
And where's the training for fire right now?
It is on Washington Boulevard.
And then we're paying for the police training, because there's a lot of classroom work, it's almost a year-long training.
And we lease from CCA.
And that is, we lease from CCA suit at about, how much per year?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Remember it being like a million dollar lease, again, off the top of my head.
It's easily, it's easily over a million dollars for police headquarters in the CCAC.
Per year?
Yes.
For the two of them combined.
Okay, I was thinking maybe that was a multi-year lease, but, okay.
For, yeah, for the two of them combined, it's, it's over a million and a half dollars for both of them.
Okay, 1.5 million.
There are two different buildings with two different landlords, but we do lease both of them.
Okay, does it split kind of evenly, half and half?
No, the headquarters is much more expensive.
Say million, and then the training is like five, 500,000 just for my scribbles, maybe? But I'll just put a question mark.
That's not unaccurate, but I don't have, I don't want to give you figures and be wrong.
But we wouldn't be moving anything over to the VA site for years, right? Suppose the conditions are terrible?
Yes, this would take a lot of work to, to bring those up to standards that we would be moving in and to fit our needs.
Right. So, I just kind of emphasizing for ourselves and for the public that all of these plans that we were all kind of in step with each other on for a couple of years, I think, are being questioned, right? So it's just, it's a different moment. We're operating, we have, you know, people challenging the assumptions that we used to all agree on a few years ago. So, it does seem like we should support, you know, the acquisition of a site for a dollar from the feds. I rue that the GSA decided that this was the only thing they were comfortable with, and I'm still concerned about that restriction that, that they chose out of so many different options out of federal law, that that was the only thing that they would consider for disposing of the property for a dollar. But I will support this today, but I think that we should continue as counsel to make sure that the public understands kind of all of the moving parts on this, what are the future potentials, what other, and I think it's really fair, it would be fair for the, to the public, for us to keep our minds open about what other needs this site might fill, and see, and even to consider what those budget implications would be, right? So that they can know and understand the constraints that we're operating under. So, I thank you for being here to answer those questions. I, I think that's good for today, thank you, councilman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, I just want to point out, and Councilwoman Gross brings a lot of great points up, and, and I thank you for that, Councilwoman, but I do want to say that I actually put this in the Act 47 Plan, this is my only contribution to the plan, we had things that we were allowed to, you know, put in, this is my only contribution, and I wanted it to be in District 2, but it, you know, now it's in the East End, but, it's because we have the land over here. But I want to say that part of the reason we did it was because it was, has an opportunity to raise money, that, that the, it will be a service of training in a, a school, a facility where people can charge, or they can charge other places around the world to come in and, and be trained by our great public safety folks in, in the city of Pittsburgh. And so that, it actually has a potential to really raise some money, and maybe we can use those funds for some of the programs that people are saying that they'd like to see in the city. So I think that's incumbent upon us is to watch as, you know, as this actually develops and evolves, that we make sure that some of those funds that they raise, not only go to public safety and the things that we need, but for preventive programs as well.
Well, I will say that we are not allowed to make a profit off of this per the public benefit conveyance, but we, we are allowed to charge other entities that might want to use the property, and we would reinvest that into the property itself and into the programs that we do there, so we, we have to make sure-
So I'm going to say, initially when we first did this, that's exactly what we were looking into, is charging and making a profit. So I, I don't know what evolved, and maybe this wasn't the right location, and maybe I should abstain today.
Well, I mean, exactly what you were explaining, it sounds like-
Thank you for making me aware of that.
It sounds like what you were just explaining, like the programs that we were talking about today, a lot of those are public safety related, so if it, it would be training that could be done on-site, then we absolutely would be able to use it towards that, and then by, by profiting off of it and then putting that money back into the maintenance of the, the property, that opens up other operational funds that can be used elsewhere, so, to space for itself, then that makes more money available for all of the other programs.
So what I'd like to see, well, first, first of all, that's the first I've ever heard of that, and now it makes me very suspicious about why we're even using this building. And second of all, I would say, say that we're not going, moving towards using the funds to prevent, for more preventive programs, then all these conversations are just conversations, and we're just really not really making any difference or any changes. And so that, so I personally am going to advocate that we use some of the funds for those things, and I think so my colleagues, so many of my colleagues will as well. But for me today, I think I'll abstain, thank you.
It sounds like a lot of those programs could be, the training would be done on that site, so for those programs, the funding could be put towards those.
Trainings like what?
It-
I mean, we, we, we have the same understanding, so you don't say, a year from now, that that, that's not the kind of training we were talking about.
If it's for an emergency management or law enforcement, and as Councilman Burgess was talking earlier about social services that could be used in place of maybe police responding, then those, those trainings that would be done on the site, would, we would be able to put towards funding that we made on the site towards those programs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cocke.
Yes, Peter, just to clarify what Council, Madam President was just saying, so, say Monroeville comes in and they want to use a training facility, they pay us $100,000 to make it simple, okay? That money cannot be used off of that site, it could be used for training on that site, and equipment, and maintenance of buildings on that site. But we can't put that into a social service program outside of that site, for instance, a group working in, you know, West, is that correct?
Correct. Picked the wrong section of the city to question, but okay.
All proceeds then will have to stay on-site, that's all, so we can profit, but as long as it's, the, the proceeds stay on-site.
Yeah, but I'm saying if we had our own facility, we wouldn't have to worry about that.
No.
If we had a facility that we weren't buying off the state, if we built our own from the, from bottom up.
Now, I got to tell you, I, I love the idea of this huge, complex training facility, I really do. And to, you know, take out of the picture places in the Strip District, and, you know, that leasing from CCAC, and, and I, I imagine all those assets will add up to something. Do you have a dollar amount on, say, the assets that we're, that we have that we're vacating?
No, we don't have a dollar amount yet, sir. You know, we would do that at the time of, you know, when we move those assets out, we'd do an appraisal and see, but I, I would say it's substantial, because it's not just property that's on Washington Boulevard, we're also talking about EMS headquarters, we're also talking about other properties in the Strip District for cargo warehouses and fleet maintenance, heavy equipment as well, so we're talking about large tracts of, of land that the city owns.
Right.
We would have to go through that real estate sales process at that time, but I would, I would venture to say that they would, they would be worth a significant amount of money, yes.
So say they're worth $20 million, Chris, just hypothetically, are we going to put that into the new facility and help pay off that 7, and 70 million, Councilwoman Gross, I think brought up, that I believe is the estimated cost of renovating slash getting this to where it is, a facility that we're looking for? I defer to Councilwoman Gross, what do you have to say?
Absolutely, I adamantly oppose the sale of the property in the Strip District, so don't add that into your map, because that is not a done deal. I have fought for community facilities to be added to the Strip District, so don't just think that's an automatic.
No, well, that's my question, were, were those proceeds to whatever entities we have, if, so, for instance, say that we keep that, but, but we have, sell the old firehouse or whatever it might be, are they going, any of that value going into the new facility?
No, no, that was not our plan, because those would have to happen after construction was completed, and the construction would be fairly significant, so, any sales or proceeds could be used towards, you know, whatever council-
Got it, okay.
However, council chose to direct those funds.
So no stipulations on that current property, we're giving up, and that's answers Councilwoman Gross's question, we're not telling that and putting it towards this, but, so, so the other thing was this, and I am so adamant, when we're talking about a $70 million project, and I hate to nitpick over little things, but our police department in particular, you know, we are training new recruits at $10,000 per head. They are leaving in droves for better jobs that pay more and better benefits and all that. I cannot vote for this facility if we can't put a stipulation, and I don't know if this is a question for you, Chris, necessarily, but whereas if an officer is to leave after we've trained them, and we have the best training in the country, and with this new facility, it will be even better, but if they're to leave, they are needed to pay that money back. Otherwise, we're training officers and recruits for, for the suburbs, and to me, the suburbs, last I checked, aren't putting any money into this facility. So maybe that's a question more for public safety, I guess, than it is for, you know, the transition of this property, but that's going to be a big sticking point on me. I don't want to train people for other neighborhoods. They either sign on to so many years with the city of Pittsburgh, or they pay the money back, or let the suburb pay the money back for the training that we gave them. So, so that's it for me, thanks, and if anybody's there to speak on that, from what I understand, I don't know if we can dictate that, if, you know, an officer or recruit has to pay that back. Again, as Councilman Burgess was referring to before, there's state and other issues that come in line here that we might not have control over that. But I don't want to build a new facility, a $70 million facility, and train officers to go elsewhere, that's all. So is anybody, anybody there to speak to that, or enlighten me on that?
I, I wouldn't be able to speak on that, but I also want to just make sure everyone's clear that this isn't just for police, this is also for fire and EMS who desperately need new training academies down in Washington Boulevard where the fire academy is now, it gets flooded all the time, and getting out of that building will allow us to, to make that, to put more green water infrastructure in there, and to really help with the flooding that happens on Washington Boulevard, so.
Peter, I understand that completely, and, and you're right, and that's why I singled out the police department, because I feel it's more there than it is in the fire and EMT. However, doesn't say it's not going to come in fire and EMT, I think by large way, it's because the suburbs are mostly volunteer firefighters, mostly volunteer EMTs. So, so you know, I foresee it as a problem in the police department more so than anywhere else, but not to say it can't be a problem there as well with out of state or, you know, bigger cities that want to pick our well-trained people off and put them on the payroll.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schlossberger.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was my, this is a really important discussion to have in light of the social issues that we're facing these days. And so thank you for everyone for and Councilwoman Gross for raising them. My my mind was going towards what I think Councilman Coghill was in part discussing, which is it's difficult to have this conversation in theory. We need actual numbers. And the quicker that we can get those actual numbers, the better it will be for us to help us make those decisions. So the estimated cost of renovation of this project of this facility, that as soon as we have the appraisals or before, if we can even have a plus or minus within a range of the expected revenue we will receive from selling of, you know, this property, this property, this property, this property to consolidate, to move those forces or those those individuals and those bureaus over to this new facility. I think that also includes maintenance and repairs so that, like, year after year, maintenance that we have to do, especially in Washington Boulevard because of the flooding, perhaps also factoring in the cost savings that we will we will benefit from once the green infrastructure project goes in on Washington Boulevard. I mean, I think factoring in all of those things, the more that we can, the more information we can have on real dollar numbers, the better and the sooner the better for us as we're making decisions about this property. So I know it's difficult now. You don't have all the numbers that are completely accurate, but I just ask that is as soon as you're able to get that to council, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. I I want to add to that, too, that, you know, we've we put forth an application based on a proposed program of of a variety of public safety, emergency management facilities. You know, that that program is subject to change. It in and of itself is subject to council approval, right? So this is kind of the first step and a necessary step in a long process that can change over time. So, I mean, I'm happy to provide councilperson whatever informations council wants that we have available regarding costs and valuations. But we also have to keep in mind that this is also something that can readily change and is as as we're experiencing right now is, you know, subject to public discussion and discourse. And so I think the idea, the properly way, what we would want to consider also is that we can do nothing on the VA site without the property. And we we have reached the point with the disposition process with the federal government where we need to make a decision as to whether or not we want this this piece of property. So we're happy to provide counsel with that with whatever information we have at hand to help you make that decision.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Second round, President Smith?
Thank you. I just want to point out that I did get a message from Laura in the administration and she said, and the mayor's office, mentioning that this can also be used for possibly use, not definitely for some of the programs that we want in place, including the Office of Community Health and Safety. So that would be some of the programs that we want. So I just want to make sure I mentioned that. So for that, I'll vote for otherwise, I was not going to vote for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill five fifty-eight.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask your indulgence, as Councilman Burgess asked, needing to leave for an appointment I have? Can we please move to Bill four ninety-two?
Okay, sure. Can we dispose of five fifty-eight? It just needs to hold for an executive session.
Sure. Thank you.
Bill five fifty-eight resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of one dollar in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred, twenty-five dollars as attorney for the client Helena Shupryor relating to the full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania against the city.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held. You wanted us to go to which bill, Councilman Cross?
Four ninety-two, please, Mr. Chair. I also have an appointment at one o'clock, and I got about a twenty-minute drive to get there.
Bill four ninety-two, I believe, is on page eleven, I think.
Yes.
Well, it's actually not on my page, but.
On page eleven.
Okay.
Under Councilman Wilson.
Okay. Will you read Bill four ninety-two?
Bill four ninety-two resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with community-based, community-based organization for community and economic development for planning assistance in various neighborhoods in the city and providing operating support for these groups and provide for payment of costs thereof, not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to amend. Members sort of received a
clarification. It's a motion to approve before a motion to amend.
Yep. Motion to approve first.
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Thank you. Discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Ah, yes. I have an amendment that was sent to members around eight forty-seven today, and I have a comment about that amendment. I can make that now.
Please do.
Yes. So I want to thank all members that I've been working with on this amendment. This this provides necessary funding to a neighborhood in my my district that's sixty percent African American. And of those households, the median income is twenty thousand. So they've been building capacity for quite some time, and they actually do a lot of empowering the community to provide direct, to provide leadership. So they're really doing a lot of a lot of great things. And so I really want to make sure that they were funded. So I want to thank all members that worked with me on that.
We want to offer up the amendment?
Yes, motion to amend.
Second.
So you give us discussion on the amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment?
Discussion on the amendment. So I'm going to push back a little bit here on Councilmen's Wilson's working with me. I the very first I heard of the councilman's desire to amend was yesterday afternoon. And he called to say that he wished to take fifteen thousand dollars away from the Third Council District, even though there has been a lengthy and year-long process that has governed the distribution of these funds. When I said to Mr. Wilson that I can't support that, in all good conscience, I have informed the organizations in the Third Council District that they will be receiving these dollar amounts and to plan their budgets accordingly. Mr. Wilson said, well, then you shouldn't have done that and hung up on me. I don't believe that is communication from a council member at the very last minute after a year-long discussion on the dispensing of these funds as communication. I would like to call Whitney Finstrom to the table, who they are the senior manager of CDBG monies in the mayor's office. If they're not available right now, I'm continue to have this discussion about my Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Whitney is here.
Hi, Whitney. Chair, can I have an interrogative?
Hold on, he has he has the floor.
Thanks. So, Mr. Whitney, thanks. Can you, I'm not asking you to drill down into the specifics, but would you please just speak in generalities, the reason and way that we process through these funds that they're ultimately dispersed? You're on mute, Whitney. Thanks.
Thank you. Afternoon. Sure, I'd be glad to. I can give you kind of a quick, quick Cliff Notes version overview. So the what was formerly called ACBO or now NED, the committee made up of thirteen members, nine council representatives plus three representatives, one from Dollar Bank, a private sector representative, the URA, the mayor's office, and from city planning worked extensively to try to come up with a fair and equitable system to process the applications. We had, you know, it's just challenging, given the current environment. We had online presentations, which were really well done by the organizations. And ahead of that, we had worked on establishing a scoring rubric to allow, you know, so that all NED members could score the applications and presentations thoroughly. And then at the end of that, there was a scoring table put together, which then led to the discussion of how these funds would be allocated, you know, by applicant. There were twenty-five applications requesting close to a million dollars. And of course, given that there there's only five hundred thousand available, you know, those tough decisions had to be made. One thing we were trying to make sure of is that this was as fair a process and system as possible. You know, given the demands and the needs of all these many of them very good groups doing good work. But anyway, we had to make a decision about how those funds would be allocated. And so based on the decision as a whole, the representation at the NED committee came up with the fourteen groups of to be funded and the funding amount, you know, split between the fourteen organizations from the top scoring organization down to the the last, you know, the fourteen organizations to be funded. And we've had an active, robust discussion about how those allocations should be done. You know, we're always open to the option, possibility in the future of trying to modify the program, looking at other ways to
Sure.
come up with scoring that really reflects the need. And and what we'd like to do in the future is to look even more at how we look at equity, how we layer that even further into the process. But we're not there yet. We're going to get there. So I hope that helps in a nutshell.
Yeah. So if I understand correctly, each council district has a member that joins in on the discussions. A sense of representative and each council district, as I would imagine, was represented in the discussion. Here, David, do you want to come on? David Hutchinson, you're, yeah, would you like to come on?
Sure, Assistant Director for Capital and Asset Management.
David, we can't hear you.
Hopefully this works.
That's better.
Okay. Yes, David Hutchinson, Assistant Director for Capital and Asset Management with the Office of Management and Budget. Yeah, as Wendy said, each of the nine council offices had a representative in the discussions and the scoring. And then mayor's office, we had Henry Horn-Pie at the table. We had Josette Fitzgibbons from the URA. City Planning also sent us Stephanie Joy Everett, who is great, and Ray Grafflow from Dollar Bank. So that was the distribution of who was at the table making decisions. I just want to emphasize that the fourteen awards are the highest scoring by average. So we just went straight with the ring as we
With the scoring. Yeah. And I would imagine an organization like the Hilltop Alliance and the work that they do scored very high.
Yeah, would have, yeah, that would have been in that distribution.
Yeah.
Kevin's over.
So the conversation I had with the councilman yesterday was extremely brief, and it ended abruptly, not on my request. But if I understood him correctly, it was that the Find You, Find You Citizens Council in Perry Hilltop, the the request for funding was not sent in to be part of the discussion. And that by doing this amendment, he wishes to correct that. Do I understand that correctly? Did they apply, I guess, is what I'm asking. I'm not challenging the validity of the Find You Citizens Council or Perry Hilltop by any means. But did they throw their hat in the ring, so to speak?
Yeah, we got a Find You application.
Okay, and a Perry Hilltop application. Okay, but they just, the capacity, I guess, the
I didn't hear an answer. I didn't hear an answer on whether or not they received.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to have the floor, okay? So they did put in their application, correct? Right. But when it came to the scoring process, the the by which everyone agreed upon this, the the organizations didn't score high enough in terms of capacity, not validity, but capacity to actually access the monies.
There's a bunch of different criteria that that are the composite, the hundred-point score. We did solicit input from each of the council members, representatives, all of the thirteen committee members. We went through a process at the very beginning of the spring when we commented through and got everybody's feedback and made a few small tweaks to the scoring criteria itself. But there's a number of categories that that go into the scoring.
Yeah, there were any times over the years that these funds came up for discussion that organizations within Third Council District, like Southside Community Council, even though they have like an eighty or ninety-year history, didn't score high enough in capacity to be able to actually manage funds and were never actually given funds. So I I again, I don't challenge the validity or the the purpose of Find You Citizens Council or Perry Hilltop. I'm sorry that they the they did not score. The way the councilman explained it to me, if I understood him correctly, was that they never applied. And my response to that was, well, there was representation at the table for the year-long process. If they didn't apply, why didn't representation speak up and say, wait a second, they're not part of this discussion? If Hilltop Alliance had been left off the list, the first thing Russia would have said would have been, wait a minute, Hilltop Alliance isn't on here. They're, you know, they're an amazing capacity builder, and we need to assist them with funding. So if I understand you correctly, the year-long process was discussed. All members had representatives. At the very end of discussion, there was a grading process, if you will, based on the capacity of the organization to distribute those funds, and the funds were allocated accordingly.
Yeah, the small tweak, just that there are a number of criteria in the scoring.
Got you. Yeah. So under, against my obvious objection and without my permission, lack of a better word, and without my support, the councilman put in a amendment to cut the Third Council District by fifteen thousand dollars, which means that would affect the Hilltop Alliance. It would affect Mount Washington CDC, of which I share with Councilwoman, Council President Kel Smith and Councilman Anthony Coghill, and would also cut Oakland Planning and Development Court. And so I implore members, if you wish to redistribute your funds, that is absolutely your purview. I will support you in that. And I ask that your support for me to be not to approve this amendment until those funds are restored to Hilltop Alliance, to Oakland Planning and Development, and the Mount Washington CDC. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We now have Councilwoman Gross.
Very simply, I cannot find the amendment. I had conversations with Councilman Wilson about this, but I think you said it was like eight fifty-something this morning, and I can't find an email in any of my accounts. If someone could resend that to me, and I might have more to say once I, I think I saw maybe an early version.
Louise sent
But I don't think that Louise, maybe that was it. I was looking for something from your email account. Okay, I'll just I'll just hold my comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And I'll try to, so I can get current with the discussion.
Thank you. Madam President?
So I just wanted to be clear about a few things. I think we need to, and this is the first time Councilman Wilson's done something like this. So I want to say that he, we have been talking and others have been talking. And I think that we, it's unfortunate that I didn't realize that there was a lack of communication with others, but I think in a way to make sure we're mentoring and showing people how to do things, because I know I've done my share of doing similar things in the past. And someone has taught and showed me a different way to to build a consensus, I think it was Councilman Cross, actually. And so I was to say that I I think that there's a solution here. I understand that the Hilltop Alliance does do a lot of great work. What is the amount, dollar amount, does somebody that we're taking from Councilman Kraus's district?
Mr. Chair, may I? It's five thousand from each of the organizations I stated for a total of fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. Okay. So I'm willing to work with you on an amendment for next week and we're trying to find those funds for next week, Councilman Wilson, if you're comfortable with that. I just don't, I think that I think that there's, I hear your concern, I hear that Hilltop does a lot of good things. And I'm even, even Councilman Kraus, if it means coming from part of my district, because they actually do work in Mount Washington as well. So I mean, I'm okay with that too. And Mount Washington did get a nice grant for six years, so I think that they're okay. But I'd be glad to work with this, work with you on this, and even other CDPG money that we have. I just think, I think there's a solution, is what I'm trying to say, if we just want to work towards that.
Can we have a clarification of what the amendment was?
And can I ask, I'm sorry, can I just also say this, because I still have the floor, I'm sorry. In the past, we have had many recommendations. The reason we stopped doing ACBO the way we were doing it is because there's always some kind of concern with it, always. And I honestly feel that part of the ACBO was designed, it was intended to help organizations build capacity. But when it comes time to applying for the funding, the only people that have capacity are the people that already have the money. So it doesn't really, it's not really doing what was intended or designed to do. I really think we ought to take this money and put it into housing, one large city project, either housing, a pilot program in public safety to give to the community groups that we're talking about, working in the public. I think we should do something totally different with this funding and more effective for the city than sustaining organizations that by now can do it. They can either write the grants themselves and find funding other places. I think honestly, all these organizations really need to look and talk about doing some consolidation, because I think the foundations are funding them as they have in the past. The CDPG dollars are not there as they were in the past. And either they're going to have to bump up their fundraising games or they're going to have to start consolidating, because I don't see any other way that can, that these groups can all be sustained with a little bit of money that we're getting every year. And if we're going to be fighting over this kind of funding, I think that there's, there's better use for this, better results we could be getting for the city of Pittsburgh. But it's not the first time we've changed this, I just want to say that.
Thank you, still first round, Councilman Coghill.
I just wanted to see, can we have clarification as to the amendments? I have not read them or saw them myself. Is it, is it lengthy, is it something we can read?
It's just the chart, I think you can find in the text of the, I mean, I'm pretty sure it's within the text of the legislation.
So what we talked about yesterday, Councilwoman Wilson, is, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, good deal.
So we'll start second round with Councilman Wilson, but prior to that, just for a point of clarification, Councilman Kraus, as relates to Perry Hilltop and Fineview, because we share those two community groups. Historically, Perry Hilltop and Fineview have always gotten separate funding. However, they share an executive director, and this year they were funded as one community group. And so what, part of what Councilman Wilson was trying to achieve was reverting those dollars back to two community groups as opposed to less, having less dollars for both community organizations. So just a point of clarification, that's all.
Yeah, but if you'll permit interrogative, there's a, there's a better, more professional way to do it than to call, demand, stamp your feet, hang up on me.
I can't, I can't, I guess.
Yeah.
Second round, Councilman Wilson.
Hi, well, thanks for getting back to me, and I appreciate the first round. I want to say that my effort was to work with all members. And so in doing so, I just want to say that I think it's disingenuous to, you know, talk about a phone call that ended as, maybe we don't see eye to eye on that. You know, we have the same needs in our neighborhoods, just like Hilltop Alliance. Perry Hilltop, Fineview has similar needs, I mean, we're talking about my most diverse and, you know, area, I mean, of District 1. And they have been trying to build capacity. You know, someone to see it as a, as a hangup is quite disingenuous whenever, I'm always here willing to talk. I never got a call back. Quite frankly, the line was, it was, you know, there was, there was no conversation left to, you know, talk about, and the line was just, there was no one talking, so I didn't know what was going on. He said that he had said that, you know, he told his organizations what they were getting. I thought that was, you know, a bit, a bit premature, since we haven't worked it out yet. But I do have some questions to the, to the CDG staff, Whitney and David. If you could, if you could just answer a couple of questions to help me understand this. So the Perry Hilltop and Fineview, were they viewed as separate entities whenever you looked at their applications?
I believe we got a request from the executive director to do a combined presentation.
I was actually just looking at their application, just because, you know, anyway, to double check, and it, yeah, it was a combined application. And I frankly, I'd have to double check, I don't know what the exact reason was at the time that they did submit like that, I don't know if it was because.
So, so my understanding is that they were asked to, to submit separately. And so in doing so, was Perry Hilltop scored?
They were scored as one.
Yeah, we never, we asked them to apply separately or together.
Okay.
That I recall.
Yeah, I have so many neighborhoods, and I'm, I was so excited to see that my, these two neighbors were trying to work together and bring their CDPG eligibility together so that they could continue to benefit from the great work that they're doing there. And, you know, I realize that you'd like to improve this system in the future, and you alluded to something that I thought was the most important point, which is equity. We all come to the table here and we use that word, especially during a parks conversation. And can you give me some insight on that? Was there an equity lens attached to this scoring system?
There was not one explicitly. We actually talked through, after being a part of last year's conversations, also possibly adding need to address disparities in income as well. But again, we didn't, we don't score the proposals and we don't write the kind of program goals. We've, we've even hired those from council. And so we didn't want to get involved in the scoring either. We hosted the conversations with the 13 committee members a couple of different times. We made it agenda items so that anybody who had suggestions could submit them, including adding an equity piece, which I personally would have liked to have seen. I think we got two small suggestions to modify a few things with, to decrease the impact of the URA scoring maybe, and to include presentations, because we got presentations back this year. So to include a scoring component for presentations were the ones that stick out in my mind. Whitney, I don't know if you know of any other suggestions that we didn't follow.
No, that's, that encapsulated, I mean, we were, you know, and there were a lot of best.
My effort here is to, is to do that correction, to actually provide. I'm sorry, I had technical problems on my end, can you hear me?
Yeah, no.
Okay, sorry about that. So this was the correction that I felt needed to be in this, in this allocations for this equity lens. And, you know, to make it more equitable. And, you know, I thought that it was very unfortunate that the, the application was combined. They submitted two separate applications. And based upon that, that, you know, I felt there was a need to make this correction so that they can really move forward with, with the, with the great work that they're doing. They have a housing plan, and they are, you know, the group that involves the community the most, have been doing the most community engagement. There's a lot of, there's a lot of need in this area. And it's just really, I just want to allude this again, I want it for all members to hear is that I'm willing to work with anyone. It's just unfortunate when I lay out, you know, the need and the another, and then my conversation with Councilman Kraus goes down a line of that I'm trying to take something from someone. It's really the need that I'm trying to restore within the, within this allocations. And I don't think anyone could really, you know, once you lay out that need, that anyone could really feel that something's being taken away from someone. So I really try to work with all members, I think, you know, councilmen, you know, other council members maybe alluded to that, but, you know, I really do feel that it's just disingenuous to go down this road. And, you know, I really want to work together, so I would really like to move forward this amendment. I think that it keeps in mind and, and corrects some, some equity that was left out. We're not asking for much. I mean, what we're asking for, you know, in my district, is lower than, than areas that are seeing such boom, like Lawrenceville. And, you know, this is, this is like a need that we, that we have to correct. And if we don't do this here, then I'm not sure where else we do it.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members for second round?
Yeah, I raised my hand, Mr. Chair.
Didn't see it, Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you very much. So it's not, it is not an issue of giving, it's an issue of taking. And that, I believe I have a 13-year history with members here and work diligently to build consensus and to work with members and support their initiatives and to help them in the representation of their council districts. It's, it's against my expressed wishes that after a year-long discussion by which the councilman had representation at the table to argue for and what he believed would be a more equitable distribution of the funds, and the fact that he failed to manage on the front end and adequately support his neighborhood groups does not mean that being, we supported the year-long process, attended every meeting, and advocated for the funding to be distributed to the groups with the best capacity that do the greatest work and the greatest outreach to, at the very last minute, four days or so before we go into a recess, to just take the money away without my express consent to say, let me help, sure, let me figure out a way to do it. The conversation was short and brief, it was to the point, I will do this, don't like it, goodbye. Not the way to, to manage this kind of a discussion. And so I'm asking members to respect the year-long process by which these allocations were achieved. If we wish to see a different process in the coming year for the new dollars, I will absolutely support whatever members wish to see to have a more fulsome discussion around the distribution of ACBO dollars. But at this late date and with member, with organizations dependent on the dollars that we are, have already agreed to dispense, I think that's disingenuous to just take the money away from them against my express desire. And we have a rich history on this council of supporting members in the representation of their council districts and doing our best to support them in the duty of representation. I know Councilman Burgess made a point to, to register an I-vote on both the amendment and the final bill. Can you tell me where funding was surrendered from the ninth council district to help make up the difference? I, I'm not sure I can decipher that. Anybody?
You'd like me to respond?
Sure.
Yes, I'm not familiar with all the groups in terms of the ninth district.
But I thought you spoke to every member.
Excuse me, excuse me. What I will say is that the groups that were kept at the 35K amount were a, I believe it's, Councilman Coghill, correct me, but it was the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Yep.
It was the Hazelwood Initiative and also the Help Initiative. And so the Help Initiative, I believe, is, the Help Initiative, I believe, is in the ninth district. But I'm not sure if there's other ones from the ninth district.
So there's, there's not a surrendering of funds from Councilman O'Connor, Councilman Coghill, or Councilman Burgess?
Correct.
So as long as we're talking about equity and equal distribution, I think it would be imperative, hold the bill, have the further discussion around the amendment, and see if the surrender of funds is not more equitable across all nine council districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to support this today.
Councilman, Councilman Coghill?
Okay, no, I just wanted to remark on a couple of things. So Councilman Wilson and I had a very constructive conversation yesterday as to my district. And you're right, Council President Kraus, you know, I'm not getting anything taken out, but I had the least amount, I only have one group that actually qualified.
That's it.
Extremely, extremely important group in the way of PHDC, who works with our Latino community, which we have numerous, numerous people who really need their help. They put people in front of computers, they help get jobs, they help them start businesses. So I want to thank you, Councilman Wilson, for, you know, respecting our conversation. And yes, the resources really are not coming back to my district as they are in others. And I'm fine with that, because I feel like other districts need more resources than mine do. But really, it was important to keep PHDC fully funded. In fact, I would like to bolster their funds. But, but no, I was happy that we had our talk yesterday and that you, you know, were a man of your word, Mr. Wilson, thanks.
Thanks, Councilman.
Thank you. Any other members for second round? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I did finally get the amendment in front of me, thank you to Councilman Kraus's staff for first emailing it to me, because I just could not find it from other emails. So I see the lists of the reductions and the transfers. And I just want to say for, you know, the record that the Bloomfield Development Corporation, both Lawrenceville Corporation and Lawrenceville United were funded originally at $35,000. And the Councilman Wilson's amendment takes $5,000 away from each of those. The Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation, while I love them and are active on Penn Avenue, really do the bulk, 90% of their programming and administrative work in Garfield. And although I do represent the southern part of Penn Avenue, so I overlap with them just a tiny bit there. So, so Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation is basically District 9. I think you could say the bulk of their, their ward here for District 9. But I, I want to say, I think there's just other ways to figure this out. So, and I've been in several conversations with Councilman Wilson saying, rather than fight over these, this small pot and try to redistribute it, there is, you know, 12 million other dollars of CDPG in our original CDPG funds for 2020. And then moreover, you know, there was an additional 8 million or so that we got in CARES funds. And I even gave them page numbers, you know, Councilwoman Wilson, you'll recall, I gave you exact page numbers of the capital budget where I thought members would be comfortable transferring funds. I'm sure, as I told you on the phone, I'm sure that these groups are doing very important work. But this does seem to be a problematic amendment and a problematic way of resolving this. So I think there's probably a better way, and I'd be happy to work on that. That's all, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, President Smith.
Thank you. I'm wondering if we could hold this and work through this, or if you want to pass it today and then work through it over the week. I mean, I just want to say, I respect Councilman Kraus, he's always worked with us in our districts. And, but I do know that Councilman Wilson has been working really hard on this, trying to get a consensus with, with members too. I don't know what happened with, with that conversation failed between the two of you, but, I mean, you're both two, two of the people that work with everyone. So I would love for us to be able to take a moment to really work through this. But, but if you want to take it over the next week and work through it, I'm happy to do that. I think we all want to find a solution to this. And if you want to hold it, I'm okay with that, I'm good with that too. Councilman Wilson, what are your thoughts?
Well.
I hate to see you argue, the two of you and anybody on council arguing over $15,000.
Well, what's unfortunate is that I, I mean, I just have to say this, is that I'm willing to repair the relationship somewhere, Councilman Kraus and I are not seeing eye to eye. I mean, it's, it's no, it's no hidden secret that, you know.
Okay, well, let's not talk about that now.
You know.
Let's talk about solution now.
Well, I mean, it's just, I just feel like it's a matter, if we're. Well, I mean, it's just, I just feel like it's a matter, if we're really going to correct equity, like we should just do it at the table. I mean, if we're, if we're, if I'm going to be, you know, charged with, you know, the the group, you know, the group, you know, the group we presented that I'm supposed to, you know, somehow make sure that they are equipped for this argument. I think that's, you know, I think that that is just, you know, not realizing how capacity is built. And, you know, your experience, I was looking forward to coming to council. And I would really like to see, you know, that that type of leadership come come at this moment, whenever we're trying to build capacity in this in this group. And, you know, just like you're able to build capacity over on the other side of the river, that's what I'm trying to do here. And I'm willing to, you know, to hold it to make sure that others, you know, have the opportunity to weigh in. But I felt that that was, I felt I felt that the strategy from trying to to take just a little bit from everyone was going to be a good strategy. But apparently, you know, that that led to some problems whenever I had my conversation with Councilman Kraus. I believe that we have unique neighborhoods that are the same. And I was simply just trying to convey that. So I feel like maybe that was the only conversation that went bad, but I feel like there's something else there. So that's unfortunate.
So with that said, is there a chance that we can work through this and try either pass it today because that's what I know that you you did your votes or whatever and work through it over the week? And if it's not settled by next week, we recommit it?
So, Madam President, may I?
It's up to the chair. It's up to the chair. I'm going to turn it back over to the chair.
Okay. If you're willing to have inter interrogatory with Councilman Kraus.
I don't want to keep talking about, I just want to, I want a solution today. I feel like we just spent 20 minutes talking about 15,000 and we didn't, we spent 10 minutes talking about seven minutes.
We're we're not talking about a dollar amount. We're talking about organizations that that out of respect for the boots on the ground, hard work organizations do, every penny counts to them. And I'm going to fight for every penny for them, especially when there's been a year long process by which everyone came to an agreement and then presented this to council. And in the 11th hour, against my direct wishes, we're just going to take the money away because that's we might is right and might is not right. Might is right is bullying. That is not how we do this here. So what I would offer up is that we do not pass this amendment. We hold this bill. We work through it. We call the bill back up on Tuesday for preliminary vote and or any amendments which which take place and then final pass the bill. It's not prudent to hold this through recess and keep all organizations that are listed here in a form of purgatory, wondering whether or not they're going to receive their funding. So is it proper for me to make the motion to hold the bill for Tuesday?
Well, if we may.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Right. I'd like to hear from Councilman Wilson. One, just just for the record, Councilman Wilson brought this to me maybe two weeks ago. And looking at the way to try to make hit the group's hole, it was under my suggestion, to be frank, that I said if everyone took a $5,000 haircut from all the previously funded groups, that would come up with enough to then get both Perry Hilltop, Fineview to the levels they've seen in the past years as well as fund the other groups. Part of the problem is we also have less money this year than we have in the past years. And so that's also what we're seeing reflected. And then lastly, just on process, and I understand the process, as you laid it out, Councilman Kraus, my office has participated on my behalf through the entire process as well. But it is a recommendation ultimately to council for us to then do what do what we want with. So we do have the ability to say, we thank you for going through the process. We're going to make adjustments. Councilman Wilson, are are you looking to vote this today or are you willing to hold it to try to work through the compromise by Tuesday?
I'm willing to hold it, work through a compromise.
Motion, motion to hold. Forgive me, Mr. Chair. Direct us or Madam Clerk in what the correct motion would be so as to be able to complete this piece of legislation on Tuesday to amend, take a preliminary vote and take a final vote, the the motion would be?
I believe we'll have to take motion to hold one week, then we'll have to waive our rules at Tuesday's meeting to bring these bills back up.
Good. Thanks, Mr. Chair. So a motion on the table to hold one week. I'm going to second the motion.
I'll second. You motioned, I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, you did. I'm ahead of myself.
All those in favor of a one week hold?
Aye.
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 You also had a motion to amend. I don't know if we want to withdraw those.
Well, we never, we actually never voted the amendment.
But there's still motion.
I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw the motion to amend.
And she seconded.
Who seconded?
Maybe, I don't recall.
Councilwoman Kell Smith, maybe Council President Smith seconded it. She seconded. You did.
It's a long conversation.
Yeah, withdraw your second. Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now. All right. So so now all those in favor to hold, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it will be held one week.
Mr. Chair, if you'll indulge me one more minute, that's where I'm done. I I'm a minute away from my one o'clock appointment and I have a 20 minute drive to it. I have human relations or HR bills. I just asked the council's support on those. I won't be here to shepherd those. I asked the council to support and Director Manuel will be present if there's any questions. Thank you very much, everybody, for your support today. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm scrolling through to see where we are on our.
We are on invoices. Invoices on page four.
Invoices. All right. We need a motion to approve the invoices. I now need a motion to waive rule 11 so that an invoice under police can also be approved with our invoices. So there's a, there's an invoice under police, which is our GVI workers. They actually have not been paid since, I believe, March 15th. Just because of COVID and people not being able to process paperwork, which is why this is coming up 5,700 as opposed to under 5,000. So we need a motion to waive rule 11 so that can be approved.
Motion to waive rule 11.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've waived rule 11. Any other discussion on the invoices in their totality?
I just, just a question about the GVI bills. I I asked this before, why do they keep coming through this way? And and so I'd like to have a conversation with you about this. Not now, later.
Okay. Any other discussion on invoices? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. We do have intra departmental transfers today for approval. So I need a motion on those.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The transfers are approved. We do have P cards for approval. Need a motion on the P cards.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. We have supplemental papers, Bill 576.
Bill 576, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into an access agreement with the Pittsburgh Zoo and PPG Aquarium for purposes of a drive in movie presentation.
Motion to approve. You could actually read the next, I think, three together. They're all driving.
Bill number 577, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an access agreement with Cosman Development Company for the purposes of a drive in movie presentation. Bill number 578, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an access agreement with the Community College of Allegheny County for the purpose of a drive in moving movie presentation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The three bills are approved. That takes us to Bill 587.
Bill 587, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Grant Agreement to Receive Funding from Allegheny County Health Department to develop to develop a public health inform diversion program and further providing for expenditures
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
Discussion, Councilman O'Connor?
Sorry, hold on. If somebody else wants to discuss first, I have to fill out a form right now. I'll be right back for further discussion.
Is there discussion from other members? None.
Okay, seeing none, then I have questions. Find that for me. Sorry. Meeting went long. I had to go to an appointment. So yeah, I mean, my questions are just if somebody's on for it, the 186,000, how long does that go for? And then also to the point that we have to make sure that this program that we're piloting, which has a lot of social services in it, which is great, just that we are prepared to fund it fully in the future. Just so everybody knows about that. I don't know if anybody's on the line. And also, I, my questions are, where is the money going to sit? I assume it's just going into a general trust fund because this organization that the mayor's putting together does not exist at this time. So I don't know if anybody from Public Safety is on that could just answer that or send us an email with those answers. I can relay them on Tuesday's meeting.
Or it looks like Laura Jorgowski is standing by.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that would be great. Just for those quick questions. Yeah.
Yes, thank you so much, Councilmember. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to share more about this this program. So this is a pilot program that's funded by the Health Department. This would be our first year of funding and we would have an additional actually first half year and then we would have additional two years of funding that that we would work with the Health Department to to allocate. That funding actually, so this program will be housed at Foundation of Hope, which is based in Zone One. And that funding would be used to fund the program director, their case manager, and then additional positions that would be in public safety to support the development of the program in Zone One. Years two and three, we would look to expand the program and that would be coming with some additional funds.
Okay, so once the program is up and running and being demoed, do we know how long that'll take? Is it six months to get like a plan together? I know it's more a conversation first.
I think that's a really, it's a, thank you for asking. That's a very good question. So we've been working directly with Commander Ragland and Sergeant Bristow. There's a very, and also with the connect municipalities, there's a very intensive community engagement process that's part of this plan. And so that will take, you know, months and will be ongoing throughout the development of the program and the implementation. We, the goal is to work through the the elements of diversion by the end of the year, recognizing that it will take time for this to become something that's effectively done by our officers. You know, likely not starting right off the bat with pre arrest diversion, but working toward that as an end goal.
So just a quick question. So we're accepting the money, then we're transferring it, if I'm correct. So we are accepting the money from the Health Department, putting it into a trust fund and then distributing it as necessary to the foundation? So we're sort of like pass through? Is that how it works?
We're, I, I, forgive me, I'm not sure if I'm using the proper terminology. I think they are sub grantee or subcontractor. They are part of the original application that we submitted to the Health Department that was funded by the.
So we're, sorry, so we're actually contracting this out through the city, which is, I mean, I, the program makes sense. I mean, this is social service work that we need to do. I just didn't know if that, if that's correct, if I'm getting that correct.
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay, so we are basically subcontracting subcontracting out with foundations to work with our police force. So this really isn't going to fall under the city. It's more we're bringing them on board as a contractor. So nobody actually in the city will run the program. It'll be between the police and this organization to work together to then come back and set policies for the city. Is that right?
So to clarify, there will be positions at Foundation of Hope that will actually run the program. And then we will have support staff inside the city government within the Department of Public Safety and ultimately within the Department of the Office of Community Health and Safety that will support the program. But the program definition and and development will be led by the Foundation of Hope.
Okay, I think I got that. Okay. All right, I guess that makes sense. So at least we're partnering with outside agencies that can come and give us that type of support. All right, I'm good with my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for members? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That take, I believe that exhausts this committee and takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. We have a number of supplemental papers, Bill 503.
Bill 503, Resolution Granting Unto Crafton Bureau. Their successors then assign the privilege and license to construct maintaining use of their own cost and expense in 18 foot stormwater sewer line and in wall with stormwater outfall into Shortiers Creek at the intersection of Shortiers Avenue and Sycamore Street in the 28th Ward, Second Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second. With discussion.
Discussion, Councilman, Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I just, it's my mustache, isn't it? You call me Councilman. But I just want to say that I am, I did send an email to the mayor's office and I'm waiting for somebody from DPW to sign, an engineer from DPW. We have PWSA signed off on this. They're engineers, but I want to make sure that our engineers sign off on this as well, because it's an area that floods a lot in my district. But Crafton Borough needs the project done. If I don't feel comfortable by next week, we're going to make a motion to recommit is all I want to say. Okay. All right, that's, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 572.
Bill 572, Resolution Granting Unto Sing Properties LLC. Their successors then assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use of their own cost and expense a new set of entrance steps at 1900 St. Knives Street in the 21st Ward, Sixth Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 573.
Bill 573, Resolution Granting Unto Charles and Ann Hale. Their successors then assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use of their own cost and expense to install a new front porch at 204 Kramer Way in the 19th Ward, Second Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 574.
Bill 574, Resolution Granting Unto Beth Rogers. Their successors then assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use of their own cost and expense to install a new deck with an accessible wheelchair ramp at 402 Knox Avenue, 18th Ward, Third Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Bill is approved. That takes us to new papers, Bill 527.
Bill 527, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements with carry all products to process source separated glass at no at no cost and further for this stated purpose to reach zero waste goal by 2030. All material will be hauled by the Bureau of Environmental Services from multiple recycling drop off locations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 528.
Bill 528, Resolution Providing for an Amended Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the construction phase of Allegheny Circle. for Costs Associated with the Construction Phase of Allegheny Circle Phase II Construction Project and Providing for the Payment of Municipal Incurred Costs Not to Exceed $2,886,495 and the Municipal Shares of Commonwealth Incurred Costs Not to Exceed $8,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 529.
Bill 529, Resolution Providing for an Amended Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase of the Smithfield Street Reconstruction Project and Providing for the Payment of Municipal Incurred Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $800,000 and the Previously Authorized Municipal Share of Commonwealth Incurred Costs Not to Exceed $5,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 530.
Bill 530, Resolution Providing for an Amended Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase of the Swine Bridge, Swineburn Bridge Reconstruction Project and Providing for the Payment of Municipal Incurred Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $1,020,000 and Previously Authorized Municipal Shares of Commonwealth Incurred Costs Not to Exceed $1,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 532.
Bill 532, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Mulsite Construction Company, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and/or the Federal Highway Administration for Work Settlement and/or Final Completion and Acceptance of the Greenfield Bridge Replacement Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 557.
Bill 557, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a settlement agreement and release between the City of Pittsburgh and Judith Nosling, Sharon Hatley, Charles, Laura, and Shayna Kaiser, Alex Machowski, Anna Zem, Shaysure Landscaping for the Purpose of Settlement of the City's Claim against the aforementioned parties as a result of retaining wall failure and subsequent landslide into Frick Park and further authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a Right-of-Entry and License Agreement to allow temporary access into Frick Park for repair work on city-owned property and non-city property and installation of a retainer wall on non-city property and a separate agreement as needed for the city to own a portion of a GeoGrid mesh to stabilize designated hillside in Frick Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 565.
Bill 565, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into a temporary construction easement, temporary trail easement, and permanent trail easement in lieu of imminent domain with the owners of certain properties in the 6th Ward addressed as 14739th Street for multi-modular trail work related to public mobility.
Motion to approve a brief discussion.
Second.
Councilman. Yeah, I would defer to Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Councilman. I just wanted to note for the record and for members that this is a really significant site that was, there's an agreement in place with the Lawrenceville community members and the very large site that, and the developer for this very large site. And I am happy to see this move forward, but I'm just gonna be kind of double-checking, triple-checking, quadruple-checking with Councilman Coghill in between now and Tuesday to make sure it's consistent. There was literally an attachment to the zoning permit for the site about these pedestrian easements because it's a very large site. It's really important to the community that they have motion through the site. So I'm happy to see this moving forward, but just gonna be double-checking it between now and Tuesday. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Human Relations Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have a number of new papers, Bill 541.
Bill 541, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 773 of 2017 with, which authorized the city to enter into a professional services agreement with O'Brien Rules and Bochicchio for the Purpose of Providing Legal Services in Connection with the Defense of Certain Workers' Compensation Matters and Claims Bought Against the City by Increasing the Costs by $600,000 for Two Additional Years of Services and by Updating the Firm's Name.
Motion to approve. Need a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 542.
Bill 542, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 848 which authorized the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Corporate Cost Control for Third-Party Administration of the City's Libilities under the Pennsylvania Unemployment Compensation Act by Increasing the Authorized Spending by $10,400 for Two Additional Years of Services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Bill 579.
Bill 579, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 277 as entitled Rock Resolution, Amending Resolution 200 Providing for an Agreement with Various Community Organizations for Operational Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities for Administrative Operational Costs, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities of Various Departmental Programs Project so as to Reprogram Funds Within City Council from Bridge Committee $5,000 to Northside Leadership Conference Bridge Committee $5,000 and Mount Washington CDC Quality of Life Committee $5,790, to Elliott West End Athletic Association $5,579.48 by Amending City Council's CDVG unspecified local option line items for Correction of the JVE at which number and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the residents of the city.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
I just want, I just want to thank members for the, waiving the rules of eight for, to bring this to today's agenda. I know on my side, there's a technical correction with the name to disburse the funds. And the other part actually, it helps Madam President's district. So, uh, once again, thanks. Maybe we should have shortened that a little bit for you, Madam Clerk.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 550.
Bill, Bill 550, Resolution, Further Amending Resolution Number 863 entitled Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 CDVG Program and the 2019 Through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS line item by $165,945 and Emergency Solutions Grant Line Item by $6,452,349 to reflect the allocation of Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I want to, sorry.
You're good.
Okay, sorry. I don't know, do we want to read 551 and 552 with this bill? And at that point, I'd like to get a briefing from Laura Dragowski.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bill 551, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 600 authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the agencies to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, housing relocation, and stabilization services by increasing the not-to-exceed amount for an emergency solution grant line item by $6,452,349 to $7,632,975 to reflect the allocation of Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding. Bill Number 552, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 555 providing for an agreement with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to provide administration and operating expenses, housing and housing-related supportive services to persons with HIV AIDS and their families by increasing the not-to-exceed amount for a housing opportunity for persons with AIDS line item agreement by $165,945 to $1,237,919 to reflect the allocation of Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Yes, if we could have Laura Dragowski. Oh, there you are. Thanks for coming to our virtual table. If you could just introduce yourself and briefly describe the bills.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Wilson. My name's Laura Dragowski. I work in the mayor's office as the Critical Communities Manager. And that really is working a lot on the human services bridge between the city and our county partners and nonprofit partners. I can speak with specificity to the bill regarding the allocation for street outreach expansion. If it's appropriate, I would, I would say that Liz Totten Daniels, Dave Hutchinson, and/or Whitney Finstrom may be better equipped to discuss the structure of the three bills combined.
Okay, yeah. Now, if you could just talk about that program then. I believe those ones are the actual line items to move the funds. But I just wanted to place them in there. So I just wanted to bring the discussion all together. But if you could just speak to your part, thanks.
Sure, absolutely. So, and again, certainly my colleagues may be able to better articulate this. But this year, as part of our emergency solutions grants allocation, we received additional funds that were specific to COVID-19-related issues. We recognize that there is a very high risk and a high likelihood that we will see increased experiences of homelessness and precarious housing for individuals in our communities because of financial pressures associated with the pandemic. And so we know that our first responders in particular are often in a position to respond to these individuals, but may not have, and this is, you know, obviously a much longer conversation, may not have the appropriate supports to help to mitigate that person's situation. The tools that they often have are not aligned with the person's needs. So this program was initiated, you know, developed, the RFP was released in an effort to try to provide supports in those situations when first responders are encountering individuals who have unmet needs to try to help them, particularly focused on housing, but other related health issues. This would afford for three, the street-based or community-based teams in three of our zones, Zones One, Two, and Five, to have a community hubs where they would work within that, those individual communities be dedicated to those spaces and do both regular street outreach, expanding the overall capacity of street outreach in the community, but then also some very specific work with first responders. You know, initially building relationships with the first responders, but over time, beginning with a post-follow-up and aiming toward a co-response. I know Councilmember Coghill said earlier that we do really want to ensure safety. So this is not an effort to very quickly bring in alternative responders, but rather to build those relationships and identify the situations in which a co-response is safe and most productive for the individuals involved. AHN was successful in their application for this program. And so we are looking forward to building a partnership with them and their Center for Inclusion Health. That center already has a street medicine team, partners with our other outreach partners in the county and the communities, and then would focus very heavily on community engagement and working with the existing organizations in these communities, not to try to replicate what they do, but to form bridges to those, to those programs. So, you know, it will look different in each of the zones because there's a different array of very strong programs in each of those zones.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions. If someone feels the need to ask, you know, some CDVG or OMB people, please do. But I'm done, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the three bills, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bills are recommended. That takes us to Bill 553.
Bill 553, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of City Planning to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with E. Holding Inc., Prepare a Feasibility Study for the Reconception, Analysation, and Reinstallment of the Cantini Mosaic at a cost not to exceed $25,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 554.
Bill 554, Resolution Lifting the Demolition Moratorium in the area comprised by the boundaries identified in the Mexican Moore Street Expansion National Register Nomination of 2008 Impose Pursuant Resolution 468 of 2013.
Motion to approve, discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman.
So, Council Chair, this is, you know, I realize this is something that we share. And this is, I think, believe this was done in 2013 when the process of whether or not this will be designated a historic district, whether or not it will be expanded, there was a moratorium placed on the demolition. And I just wanted to get clarification from Director Dash, if he's on the line. And I see his camera already. Thank you for waiting through all this. If you could just introduce yourself, but also explain, you know, where we're at and why this is necessary at this point in this, in this process.
Thanks, Councilman. Andrew Dash, Director of City Planning, Department of City Planning. You're correct in that there was this, this moratorium was put in place after council had acted on a city, you know, on a city historic district nomination for the Upper Mexican Moore Streets. You know, that, that, that legislation took a long process through the court system and ultimately was overturned in the courts. So the history, that historic district's expansion now is in place. So because that historic district expansion is now in place, the Historic Review Commission would be, you know, would be the, the place where all demolitions would be considered. And so, you know, this, this, you know, there's, there's conflict between the historic review provisions in Title 11 and this moratorium in discussion with Councilman Wilson, or I'm sorry, Councilman Lavelle and, and your office. You know, this legislation was presented to, you know, to be able to reconcile that.
And how, once, you know, if this passes and the Historic Review Commission would look at all demolitions in this district, how likely would it be that someone will be able to demolish their house if they wanted to?
So if, so if someone were looking to, the present, you know, under the moratorium, what happened was if anyone's looking to demolish any portion of a building, they had to go through the zoning board of adjustment for a variance to the provision, to the demolition moratorium. You know, and so, and so, for example, just at a recent zoning board case, you know, zoning board hearing, we had a number of properties in, in this area that were looking to demolish part of the rear of the structure to be able to construct, you know, in addition. And, you know, and those had to go through the zoning board of adjustment and a variance process. However, since this is now a historic district, those, you know, those types of applications would have to go through the Historic Review Commission. And the Historic Review Commission would have to approve any applications for demolition. So whether that's a portion of a building or the entirety of a building, it would be something that would still have a public process and a community process that leads into that. It would be through the Historic Review Commission as it's identified in Title 11 of the code.
Okay. Okay. All right, thanks. I just wanted to get a clarification on that and just talk about demolition a little bit in terms of that area. But thank you for your, for your time. I'm not sure if other members have questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
I'm going to mention just one little thing that's, you know, similar, but not about this area specifically. Just a word of caution, and I, I know it's kind of a sore point, and I bring it up many times, but the Baum Center overlay has in place, it's one of our iPods, right, that is, or now it's a permanent overlay, that says demolitions have to go through review of planning commission. And twice since I've been in office, I've been driving down the street and seeing a building in process of demolition. It was just granted a demolition permit and did not go through planning commission approvals. All right, so it happened once, I'm driving down Baum, and I'm like, whoa, there's a wrecking ball. This building's half gone. Call up planning and PLI. Yeah, no, that was a mistake. It just got its permit without due process. You know, a year later, driving down the street, whoa, there's a big building being demolished. Oops. That was just, that building, that big, big site was given a demolition permit. Shouldn't have gotten a demolition permit, didn't go through the due process required by the zoning law. So word of caution. We hope that doesn't happen anymore. But, you know, members beware, we, we do seem to too easily, as the city administration, give out demolition permits. I'm going to stop. This has been a very long agenda, so we can, we really need to talk about this offline, and I'm happy to continue that conversation.
Yeah, happy to discuss that further. I think just in that specification, you know, we yes, that, you know, I think, you know, Director Kinter and I have, have obviously looked at that, and I think that those have been changed in the one-stop system to make sure that those get flagged for those places where there's planning commission approval, which is Baum Center, Downtown, Oakland, and Uptown, where that goes through the planning commission.
I won't say anything more now. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I lost my place. Hold up. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Strausberger. We have a one deferred paper, Bill 521.
Bill 521 Resolution Repelling, Amending, and Reenacting Resolution Number 18 of 1983, Title Authorizing and Directing the Bureau of Cable, the Department of Public Works Broadcasts all of council regular legislative sessions, standing committee meetings, setting forth the responsibilities of the Department of Innovation and Performance with respect to meetings of city councilor to reflect various changes in the city's departmental organization structure and other changes to reflect technological innovations since 1983.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Okay.
So I actually have not reconnected with Reverend Burgess on this bill since it was first introduced and then held, so I don't know his wishes. So what I will do is motion to hold one week, and if need be, if we're in a rush to bring it up through a waiving of the rules on Tuesday, we'll do so. But I'll motion to hold, if it's motion to hold one week, will that then just, it'll come up at the very next?
After recess.
After recess? Okay, okay. I'll motion to hold, and if we need to bring it up on Tuesday, we'll, we'll make that happen. Motion to hold.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held one week. Takes us to new papers, Bill 547.
Bill 547 Resolution Amending Resolution Number 569, which authorizes the city of Pittsburgh to extend a professional services agreement with STR Grants LLC for software services relating to the e-problems plus profiling system by a term of one year and an additional cost not to exceed $33,548.89.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 548.
Bill 548 Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a data sharing agreement to access certain data from the I-95 Corridor Correlation Traffic Flow Data Program.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 548.
Bill.
No, that one, I'm sorry. Bill 549.
Yes, Bill 549 Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a data sharing agreement to access certain online services, including the Waze Connected Citizens Program data upload tools and the Waze Traffic Data API.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 559.
Bill 559 Ordinance Providing for the General Acceptance and Authorization by the City of Electronic Signatures pursuant to the Electronic Transaction Act 73 by amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 1, Administrative Article 7 Procedures, to include new Chapter 172 Electronic Signatures.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Strausberger? Are you making an amendment to this one?
I am not.
I had, I had made a note. I thought you were. Sorry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross, Bill 558, 588, excuse me.
Oh, 588 Resolution Amending Resolution 153 to clarify the parties that will be entering into the corporation agreement relating to the shared operation and administration of the City of Pittsburgh Child Care Quality Fund.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
Second, first of all, I want to thank the cosponsors and the administration for trying to activate this fund that the Women's Caucus put in place. I'm going to struggle to remember the year. I want to say it was at least 2017. The $2 million pot of funds to be used to improve the quantity and quality of childcare in the city, and this is a very important moment for that. But first, there's a technical amendment, so I'm going to motion to amend.
Second.
And a verbal amendment. Thank you. Thank you. And the, the verbal amendment is just that in the text file, if you look down a few paragraphs, there's a kind of blank space to fill in the JDE number, and none of that is actually required in the legislation in order to move these funds. So, Madam Clerk, I'm motioning to strike out the sentence that begins, "Funding under the cooperation agreement or agreements shall be paid from," colon, JDE number, item, number, amount. There's a big blank.
Correct.
And the sentence ends with $2 million, and then period. So if we could strike out that sentence.
So noted.
Okay, so that's the end of the amendment. Do you need to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
So, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended?
If we could just have one short, I know this has been a very long agenda, and I've got a few other complicated items in my committee, but I did request that we have, I think, Tiffany Semino, if you're still there for the administration, I am so sorry, this has been a very long council session. You're probably really hungry.
Well, you know, you guys all hung in there. Hi, everyone. My name's Tiffany Semino. I work in the Office of Equity in the mayor's office. I'm the Education and Youth Manager. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Given that, as we keep saying about things these days, you know, this was the kind of originally conceived years ago, and it has been in a, in a certain pathway for years. Can you just give us as brief as you can, briefly as you can, a synopsis of kind of like, why now? And how is this going to help? And because it is also a cooperation agreement with the county, if, if that's part of the story, too.
Yeah, sure thing. So we will be partnering with the Early Learning Resource Center, which is an entity that consists, it's overseen by the Allegheny County DHS, and then they also have partners, the Alliance for Infants and Toddlers, and Trying Together. And they work with childcare providers also, with families, to connect them to quality care and supports that are needed to provide that. So this fund would provide those childcare facilities grants to improve their program. It could be a curriculum. It could be materials for the classroom.
Safety improvements with the, you know, because of
Yeah, sure thing. And safety is a part of it. Yeah, so safety is definitely a part of that. So, you know, it could be used to purchase PPE cleaning supplies because we know those childcare facilities that are opening now, they're using cleaning supplies they would have used for a week and within a day or within half a day. So it could be used for the cleaning supplies, as well as things like partitioning off classrooms so that they're able to accommodate children that need to be distanced in smaller groups.
Okay, is this going to be able to be deployed in 2020?
Yes, yes. So once this was transferred over to the Early Learning Resource Center, we all already have an application in mind, and we've been doing outreach with childcare providers so that they already have the idea that this is coming and are looking at what expenses they may have in their program that our, that our grant program would be able to assist with.
And you have guarantees in place that the city dollars are going to be applied only to city facilities?
Correct, yes. They will only be applied to city facilities, and there will be some priority considerations around programs that serve low-income families, families that work non-traditional work hours in areas of the city where there's a lack of quality care. So we also have priority considerations within that.
Thank you. And when I said city facilities, I meant just childcare operations, whether they're for-profit, nonprofit, profit, or however they're owned, but that are physically located in the city of Pittsburgh, not owned by the government.
Yep, correct. So any childcare facility that's legally able to operate and has a state license will be able to apply in the city.
Great. Yeah, I think we don't want to take any more time in the agenda, but if you can just circle back around with us and let us know how we can do outreach. We know that, I think, all around the city, we have parents who are very stressed about how they're going to be able to go to work, those, those residents who are required to be at work, how they're going to be locating childcare for their children, you know, given that schools might be out or might not be. It's, there's so much flux right now. It's very stressful that the place where they might have had childcare previously may not be reopened. And so how we're going to help parents connect with childcare, I think, is, it's going to be something we can help spread the word about.
Definitely.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your work. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
That's almost your chair.
Thank, Madam President?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I just want to also just echo, thank you, Tiffany, for your work. I want to thank the administration for moving this forward. This has been a, a challenge, but they have moved it forward, and I'm expecting really great things to come from it. But I also want to acknowledge the work of the Women's Caucus, who initially put this together, but I'm also happy that we're now working with Councilwoman Strausberger, who is also very passionate and actually has her own children, her own child, and understands the challenges really well. So I think between the women with Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Strausberger and the men on council who have children, we'll be able to come up with some really great programs for, for the families that really need these things now because things have changed so much over the years. But I do want to say that I wish that all the businesses, I wish we could incentivize working with the, with the URA for businesses that are coming in and are moving into Pittsburgh or have a certain amount, a number of employees, that they offer free childcare. I wish that we could get places to offer free childcare. I just saw that Chrissy Porter has this amazing, amazing project in Sheridan, and the mayor and I are going there on Friday night to, to see another presentation of some of the things, programs that she's bringing in, but they're hiring about 200 people in all sorts of different fields, and they provide childcare for free for all their employees. And I just think that's such an amazing thing. I'd love to see more and more companies do that sort of thing because with this COVID, if anything's brought a lot of attention to the needs of families, it's the childcare issue under this situation. So I just want to thank everyone for their work and encourage more of these kinds of things. So, thank you. My battery's dying, so I'm talking quick.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
Yes, you know, Tiffany, you're still on, and first of all, I want to thank the Women's Caucus for taking this issue up. Councilwoman Gross and I have had many conversations about this, and it's near and dear to my heart. My mother was a childcare provider. She wasn't licensed, though, Tiffany. She wasn't, you know, she was just kind of operating out of her
That's child a parent.
To my brothers. So, Councilwoman Gross and I spoke to, you know, like, somebody who operates like my mom did, and she doesn't have the resources to even know how to be licensed or how to, you know, apply for, if she needs a washing machine or something to help her out. So I would like to look deeper into that, and I want the Women's Caucus to know you'll find a full supportive partner in me in this because it is near and dear to my heart. So can you speak to that at all, Tiffany?
Yeah, sure thing. So one of the things that we do offer as a resource in the early childhood community is the Early Learning Resource Center do have quality coaches that are on staff that they can actually work with a process that the state requires those facilities to have. So they're able to reach out to them, and then also the URA is going to be launching a, a small loan fund for
Microloan for Chakra, also with Women's Caucus money that we put in place back in 2015. We put $250,000 in, and council members voted to transfer that money last December to the URA for childcare lending, and they've been a really great partner so far. We're very excited about it. So those will be also, those will be microloans, and we're specifically targeting councilmen, the, I'm sorry for the interregative, specifically targeting those family care or group care homes that are in home locators to build that business capacity so that those operators can grow their business.
Yeah, that's great. That's, that's exactly what I want to hear because I think, you know, many of these organizations or childcare facilities are very adapted to, you know, how to apply and get the help that they need, but I think there are numbers in the thousands of, not only men, not only women, perhaps men as well, who take on childcare, and they don't know the first steps as to how they become licensed and how they can apply for these things. So again, it's near and dear to my heart. Women's Caucus, I'm with you all the way on this, and I look forward to making something happen where we can help people who need it. Thanks.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair. And Tiffany, also, thank you for the help consulting with the microloan program as well.
I'll just say, Councilwoman Strausberg, Councilwoman Gross, it sounds like we have our fourth woman for the Women's Caucus. We're signing up, Ms. McCallkill.
Thank you all. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Bill is recommended. That takes us to deferred papers. Councilwoman Gross, I have a question. You have four bills that you want to bring back to the table? You want to do that now or after these?
Oh, Mr. Chair, that would be fantastic. Thank you. So councilmembers, I was able to speak to a few of you in this very long agenda and send you messages, but I finally got through to the Director of City Planning this morning and talked through a few of our bills that had been held. So under the coaching of Madam Clerk, I'm going to motion to waive the rules of council so we can discuss those bills. So I need a second on that.
Seven seconds.
Bills, we're going to bring them all?
Yeah, but I think they're separate motions, right? So first, we're going to motion to waive the rule of council. Those of council.
To bring bills?
I think the first motion is just the motion to waive the rules of council according to Madam Clerk, and then we vote on that, and then I motion to bring them back.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor of waiving the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk's approving of me here. I think I've got it. I'm following her instructions. Now, Mr. Chair, I will motion to bring back these bills. Motion to bring back Bill 2020-0362, 2020-0363, 2020-0364, that's three of them, and then the fourth one is 2020-0438. I need a second and a vote on that.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so
Four bills on the table.
So I guess I have to, like, motion to approve a discussion, you know, like, the, I'll just do them all. Can we just do all of them? 0362, 0363, 0364, and 0438. So we can discuss them then. Is that right? So I need to motion to discuss.
Do you want to read them or do we?
Yeah, if you've got them in front of you, I think that would be helpful for everybody.
Bill 363 Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Duncan Street Town Homes at 5308 through 5314 Duncan Street. Bill Number 363 Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 52nd Street Town Homes at 724 and 728 52nd Street. Bill Number 364 Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 39th Street Homes at 204, 206, and 208 39th Street. Bill Number 438 Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plans for the Pittsburgh Distilling Company 2401 Smallman Street.
Okay, so motion to approve discussion.
So moved.
So, thank you. I, these bills are some, I'm not even sure if they're all, but there's some of the ones that were held that was able to get clarity on. I spoke to the Director of Planning finally, and I won't go into details, but he admitted that between planning, P L I, and Law Department, council did not have the right information in front of us on these bills. They are today, currently, fully permitted, some of them, this is what should not have happened, actually even constructed. So I'm happy to move these forward. If we do provisional vote today, they can get final votes on Tuesday. And we're back on track, but then we still have the business in front of us. And I've got Councilwoman Wilson and Councilwoman Smith on an email chain with the Directors of P L I and City Planning. Then we can all kind of regroup over recess or at the beginning of September when we come back. Why sewer modules are not coming through the bureaucracy the way that gives council all the information that they need and at the time that they should be. So I'll just leave it at that. These ones are clear. And I have to say, you know, I wouldn't have known except for the public comment expressing consternation over them. So I'm happy we were able to figure it out in the nick of time here before recess. If anybody has any questions, I can try to answer them.
Thank you. Or any other questions? None? Just for my own clarity, are we approving all four of these?
Yes.
Okay. So motion to approve 362, 363, 364, 438. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All four are recommended. That takes us to deferred papers, Bill 109.
Bill 109 Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Town Homes on Fifth Avenue Project located at 5127, 5129, 5131, 33, and 5135 Fifth Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 141.
Bill 141 Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 533.
Bill 533 Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Chief Elected Official for the City into one Chief Elected Official and Local Workforce Development Partnership Agreement into a Chief Elected Official and Fiscal Agent Agreement with Free Rivers Workforce Investment Board, Inc. and the Chief Elected Official of Allegheny County, Rich Fitzgerald.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 534.
Bill 534 Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance and the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to execute as necessary instruments for the Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants in favor of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority to permit the installation of green infrastructure at the Bob O'Connor Golf Course Clubhouse in Shindley Park as funded by Alka-San Grow Grant awarded to the city and further authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works and Finance to enter into any other necessary agreements between the city and Alka-San necessary to implement the Grow Grant projects for the benefit of the public.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That, Bill 535.
Bill 535 Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contribution and corporation agreement with the P W S A for certain utility relocation and other work elements in connection with the Allegheny Circle Two Way Conversion Project.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 536.
Bill 536 Resolution providing for the execution of a corporation agreement with the U R A for the performance of certain work in connection with the 2020, 2021 CD V G program and providing for the payment of costs thereof not to exceed $4,316,800, Council District All.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 537.
Bill 537 Resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the U R A and the Housing Authority for the sale of various blocks and lots in the third and fifth wards of the city, Council District Six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 538.
Bill 538 Resolution authorizing a corporation agreement with the U R A designating the U R A as the city's agent for administration of the 2020, 2021 Home Investment Partnership Program, Council District All.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 539.
Bill 539 Resolution authorizing the U R A to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, into the publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward of the city designated in the D registry office of Allegheny County located at the north side of Kelly Street between Fifth Avenue on the west and the railroad right away on the east and the south side of Frankstown Avenue, also between Fifth Avenue on the west and the railroad right away on the east, Council District Number Nine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 540.
Bill 540 Resolution authorizing the U R A to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interest of any into the publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward of the city designated located at 608 Regis Way, 119 Shetland Street and Shetland Street immediately north and south of Regis Way, 600, 602, 604, 1612, 16 and 18 Larima Avenue and Larima Avenue between Joseph Street and Shetland Street, 6300, 6302, and 6304 Joseph Street and Joseph Street south of Regis Way and 6312 Rapidon Way and Rapidon Way south of Regis Way, Council District Nine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Clerk, I just want to, I just want to say that was a test. Putting that bill last after this agenda was a test for you and you passed.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That exhausts our agenda and takes us to meeting announcements. Council will hold a cable cast public hearing this evening at 6:00 PM on policing in Pittsburgh. To register the speaker of this hearing, please call the City Clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 4:30 PM today. You may also submit written testimony by email to cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Council will also hold a cable cast post-agenda relative to policing in Pittsburgh on Monday, July 27th at 10:00 AM. Also, council's recess is scheduled to begin next Wednesday, July 29th, and will end Thursday, August 20th. There will be no meetings on the 29th. Is there any further announcements from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. Councilman, are you not willing to bring that bill back?
I apologize.
Aw, damn.
We voted to hold Bill 429 for one week. We do not have a standing committee's meeting next week. Therefore, we should recess this meeting so that we can reconvene it before our standing, our regular meeting Tuesday. Then we could vote that bill and it can come up on our regular meeting that Tuesday for final.
Look at you. That's it.
And what was 429?
That was.
The fact though.
Funding.
Okay.
And then I also motioned to hold the bill that was under I N P as well for Reverend Burgess. So both of those bills.
So we can bring them both up.
If he wants to. I'll talk to him. Motion to recess.
Just for clarity, it's Bill 492.
492, what's it? 49, I'm sorry. I'm trying to rush it off here myself.
Believe me, yeah.
So motion to recess our meeting. Second. Bill next Tuesday.
Oh, Teresa motioned.
So moved.
Second. Yeah.
Aye.
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 Recede. Thank you all.
Thank you.